Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the August 29th Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee to order if you agree to join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Since we are being recorded, we'll do introduction of members. Erin Vinoco Millville.
Tara Larkin Millville.
Wendy Greenstein Blackstone.
Karen Vernon Millville.
Jack Keefe Blackstone.
Jane Reggio Millville.
Matt Errenworth Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco Superintendent.
Okay. So, this is a more informal meeting today, but we did have some items that we needed to take a vote on. And do we have any warrants? It says warrants, but did we get any?
I think it's a placeholder.
Okay. Yeah, so we'll skip that. Do you have the vote in your thing, Jason?
Yes, the language.
Yep. Is it one of your items, though?
It is.
Okay, so we'll wait.
Item G.
So we'll turn it over to you.
Great, thanks. So, I know we've got kind of a heavier agenda, but I think we'll be able to move through some of the items and, you know, what I'm looking forward to with this kind of format is just more of a dialogue as we're kind of working through a bunch of different of the agenda items listed here. But just first, I wanted to give a quick update on school opening, which is such an exciting time of year. And we actually started last week with a leadership team last, so not this Monday, but the Monday prior. And we had a three-day leadership retreat with our district leadership team, which includes, of course, our central office folks, our principals, assistant principals, and we had our new planning, teaching, and learning coaches with us for a chunk of that time, too. And that was really about just setting the course for the year, making sure that we were all approaching the work from the same place. I think one of the things that was really powerful that we did, Jill PG led us through this piece of the work, was identifying how we lead. And not like the technical side of it, like the systems and structures and routines and all of that, but more of like how we lead from in here. And we spent a good chunk of time talking about core values. And that's really important because as our leadership team continues to strengthen and align the way we work, we also have to align, you know, kind of the place in which we see problems and challenges through, you know, what is that common lens? And so we did come up with two core values, which are patience and understanding. And so as a team, we have all made a very strong commitment to take those two core values and really wrap them around our students and wrap them around the way we lead the work across the district. So I thought that was a really, it was just a really important part. We spent a lot of time on blueprints and action plans and roadmaps and data cycles and all those things are hugely important, but they're not if you don't lead from a common sense of values, so. So that was really important. We then segued the later, the latter part of the week with our new staff orientation, and that was really actually pretty different, too, the way we set it up. We actually did a Friday, Monday, two-day session. We did that because we had started our Wilson reading training, and that was four straight days. We had all 10 staff that were participating in there, and some of those folks were new, so we didn't want them to miss anything. So we started orientation on Friday, and we started with more of kind of like the systems and structures, and this is how the district runs, and spent a lot of time really talking with the mentoring program, and they met their mentors and talked about kind of the framework in terms of how that process works. And we have a really interesting group of new staff in the district in that we were super intentional where we looked to hire, you know, some new folks, but also folks that weren't new to education but are new to us. And so we have a really good cross-section of new faculty this year. It's a really diverse group from that standpoint. Then we shifted gears, and on Monday of this week, we spent really pretty much a whole day together and really looked at that idea of kind of who we teach, what we teach, and where we teach. So not only did we look at, you know, again, some of the systems that we use Aspen and how to access, you know, students', you know, individual education plans and those kinds of things, but we actually spent a good chunk of time on our purpose. So that idea of, you know, that common thread that brings all 300 of us together, the adults that are serving the 1,800 kids around developing happy, healthy, proficient kids who are ready for college, career, and community. And how, you know, you might be a new nurse to the district, or you might be a new third grade teacher, or, you know, a chemistry teacher at the high school, but what is that, yeah, like what does that look like in your seat? And what does that mean for how you work? And so we spent a good chunk of time talking about that. We then really kind of split the group, and a couple of us took each kind of half or each part of the group and just spent time in a circle asking them, like, what's on your mind? What are some of the big questions that are coming to the surface? And, you know, really gave them permission to just take a breath, because I knew you could see the, you know, the excitement, but you could see a little bit of the angst, like, oh my goodness, this is so much information to take in. So we spent a lot of time giving them permission to just be okay with the fact that the kids were going to be here on Wednesday and that they would be ready regardless of every little nook and cranny in their classroom was set up. So that was, that was important. And then we went on the bus tour, Matt and I went. It was, it was really great. It was about a two-hour tour, and it was, I would argue, it was even better than the first one I had. Everybody was there. We had staff members, mentors, didn't have to come the second day. The new staff did, but we had a couple of mentors come and a couple stayed for the bus tour. And they had been working here, some of them almost 10 years.
And never.
Had never. One of the teachers said, I live in, I think she said Medway, and I, and I've been driving to Millville Elementary for about 10 years.
Same road.
And I, yeah, I go the same road. She said, I had no idea that all of this stuff or these neighborhoods were in our communities. And she said, every staff member should do this. It was, it was really great. It was really, really great. So we had an opportunity to spend a good chunk of time with the staff just talking about that, and we have some former graduates.
Oh, wow.
We hired one. Yeah, that's, that's really, really neat. And she's right out of college, and she's actually starting at the middle school, and we saw her house on the bus tour. So it was fun. I mean, it was, it was a really nice opportunity. And then Tuesday, we started back with staff. And we had a chance to, we had an optional kind of early breakfast at 7:30, and the turnout was awesome.
Good.
Yeah, it was, it was a really beautiful morning, and then we went in and started with the years of service and introduction of, actually introduction to new staff and then years of service, and had all that kind of wrapped up by about 8:30. And then the teachers went back to their buildings and started their professional development for the day. So it was, it was a really great day. And then most important, kids came back yesterday. And so we all, Matt, myself, and Jill, had a chance to all kind of divide and conquer and split up and visit different schools, and, you know, we had a chance to get to all the schools and talk to a bunch of different classes of kids and talk to teachers. I had a chance to talk to new kindergarten parents at orientation at the complex, and it was just, the energy was fantastic. Everything wasn't perfect, everything wasn't exactly in place, and, you know, some of the construction's still going on, and we're still doing some cleanup in certain places, but just the positivity seemed and felt very strong from all angles.
Did we do the T, did, did anybody do the T-shirts for the little kindergarteners, or would you do that?
We did that one year, I think. It was great, I got them.
Two years, two years in a row.
Was it two? Because Will has one.
Elena had, Elena got one.
Yeah.
So they definitely did it her year.
They didn't have them yesterday, they didn't have them on. I don't remember if we ordered them all, but at orientation, you know, yesterday they didn't have them.
I just, I think it's a cool tradition, and if we started something, that would be something fun to start.
Actually, I think it was Elena's year was the first year that they did it.
Yeah, and I think it was Mr. Dudak who dropped off the T-shirts.
He did some, yeah. And then we, as a school committee, said they all should get them and let's do it.
Yeah, but I think his original plan was, you know, to give him a really big shirt, and every year, parents would take a picture with that shirt on, so mine is still in, I forgot about them, but they're still in my drawer. So when they're seniors, you'll have a picture of them with this T-shirt on as a kindergartner in the same T-shirt.
Or the handprint on the back, that was the other idea I saw when I looked online, that you can put your kid's handprint all the way across it, and it will.
Ask if you were.
That was a really great, it was, when he presented it to us, when it happened, it was, I mean, the social media went crazy with it, too. I mean, they were sending the pictures of their little kindergartners in these really big shirts, but.
They looked like dresses.
Yeah, but the idea was that they're going to grow into being this, you know, charge of pride.
I think they all got larges or wide, large or whatever, but.
Yeah, they got large.
I know the, the parents.
Well, Will has one.
Yeah.
So are they the same age?
Nope, she was the year before.
Yeah, see, I think.
I think Elena and the boys are the same age.
And it was the first year, fourth, going into fourth. And I think they were the first year, and it was random, they were giving them out on the buses. And then parents went crazy because they were like, how come certain kids got them, and we all want them? And then people wanted to buy them.
Yeah.
It was, that was the first year.
Yes.
I'll have to look into, I'll find that out, yeah, I don't know if we did.
And I think it was because he actually got on the bus.
He did.
He got on the bus and got off of the stops and put them on the kids, and everybody wanted them.
And they had the pictures all over social media.
Yeah, yeah, it was great.
That's awesome. I know that, I know the parents at the orientation, we quizzed them and asked, you know, what's the year of graduation? They all said 2032. I mean, like, nobody, yeah, I mean, it was, it was almost kind of funny. I asked, I'd asked Jenny.
That's reverse.
And then she, she said 2023. And then she's like, no, wait a minute, she said 2032, and I said, you think the parents know? And then she asked the parents, and like, without skipping a beat, they all knew it. Yeah, which is good. So it was, it was definitely a fun, upbeat, positive opening, so just wanted to give a little update on that. And so shifting gears, just a quick, again, kind of update on the reorganization of the following, of the departments that we had discussed throughout last school year. And we reorganized a lot, and so we thought it'd be a good idea to just do a check-in with everybody and kind of share out where we are. So starting with the special education reorganization, the new team chair structure is in place, and so we have our team chair for pre-K to 3, grades 4 through 7, and grades 8 through 12. So those individuals are all in place, they're ready to roll. And services, so that all of the schedules and service delivery kind of setup that we needed to do for the kids was done. And so the teachers, the special education team, spent the last two days just talking with their students, getting to know the kids, visiting the classrooms, connecting with the teachers, and all services start Tuesday, which is pretty great. So we wanted to give a couple days for them to get to know the kids and the, and the teachers that they're partnering with, so we're really excited about that.
I think that's a really positive move. I know in the past, you know, we've seen a lot of, when is my child getting services? And questions coming at us, so I think, I think having it start Tuesday is really good, that's pretty good.
Yeah, there was a lot of, so there was a lot of summer, like, planning work that went into that between Jill and the principals, and they did a really nice job of getting, you know, and they scheduled the way you should schedule. All, you know, the students that need unique services or special, so like, they, they blocked those kids and scheduled those kids in first, and then looked at, well, how do we provide the services to those students? And so while it sounds like it's a kind of a structural thing, but it's the first piece you have to get in place, so we're really happy about that. And also pleased to have the team chair structure in place, and having had an opportunity to speak with some of the team chairs, actually all of them, they're excited about this. It's a different way of looking at moving forward, so that is definitely off and, off and running. The assistant administrator for special ed, as you know, we spoke at the last meeting, we did not post, we did not repost for that, we ended up posting for a coach for that department, so we're really looking for someone to help move the teaching and learning piece, and between Matt, Jill, and I, we're still dividing up the responsibilities and what that's going to look like.
So you haven't, we haven't gotten a coach yet for that position?
Not yet. We did post for it, and we do have a couple of applicants that look.
Okay.
And were you, did you tell us you were getting us a job description for that, or?
It's the job description that we used for the other coaches, the planning, teaching, and learning coaches, where it's just going to be that work within the special ed division.
Okay.
Yeah, so we just posted for a planning, teaching, and learning coach, but specifically for special ed.
And we'll just use a coach for the whole year?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And we'll see how the model works. I don't, you know, we'll have to reevaluate it for the, at the end of, or kind of toward the end of this year to see what.
Where we go.
Yeah, where we go next, but. And one of the things I appreciate is, you know, the committee working with us to adapt that. I mean, because, you know, my sense is as we move through all of this, we may have to make some quarter turns or some changes to some of these things. So that's kind of where we are with that, with that piece, at least from a, like, a personnel and structural kind of standpoint. Next month, Jill will be here to present formally to the committee, a in-depth presentation, and then obviously conversation around where we were with special education, where we are presently, and where we're going. And we're going to look at the full range of services from out of district, of which we've actually brought back two students already. We were looking to bring three, so we're still working at that, but we have brought back two of the three that we're looking to move back. But then at that full range from, you know, substantially separate, and those kind of unique in district programs, to inclusion and everything.
So I just have a request for Jill.
Yes.
Just because in the past, we've been given pamphlets of what co-teaching looks like. I know there's been a lot of conversation back and forth, and when she does present, is it possible for her to share out, you know, what it's going to look like? Because I know it looks very different depending on the age group and what that plan is going to look like if I were to understand, you know, understand what it looks like in my child's classroom, just so that the community understands and staff understand about what, what it looks like. And I know it looks very different depending on the age, but I think, you know, as a committee, we've been given so much stuff of just here, this is what we're doing, but the actual what it looks like, I think would be really important to share.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the things Jill and I had spoken about, just in kind of gearing up for this on the, on September 12th, is, you know, no, like, edgy jargon stuff. Like, you need research on why inclusion.
Right.
You need to know, the community needs to know, what does that model look like in my kid's fifth-grade classroom? Like, in, in our district.
What does it mean?
Yeah.
Right, and you may, and to be honest, you may not even know what's happening, which is the overall goal, is to not know that it's really happening, but I also think it's important for them to understand, you know, this is, this is what it looks like, and it doesn't matter, you know, what age group, the high school, the middle school, you know, I, I think we need to have a clear understanding of what that looks like for my child if my child was in that classroom. I think the community, you know, deserves that.
Yeah, agreed. That's how we'll be, we'll set it up that way for sure.
So I also have a question for, for her, and I'm sorry, I never responded to the email you sent us that had the enrollment that we requested after the last meeting.
Oh, sure, that's okay.
But in one of the columns, you put out of district.
And there were nine K?
Yes.
Yeah.
So did we, I, I clearly, like, gasped at that, I'm like, can we inherit these?
So it's a coding.
So you're saying we brought two back, but we weren't counting those nine last year, right?
So those nine are not out-of-district kids. We have to code them that way because it's early intervention services. So they're actually not out-of-district students, but that, most of them of those nine get speech services, and they're, it's through early intervention, so we have to code them, we have to code them that way. So that's, it's not nine.
So they're in kindergarten or they're not in our school?
They're pre-K, K students that receive some level of intervention, mostly around speech, they are in district kids, they're not out-of-district.
So when they aged out at three of early intervention, they come to us?
Yes, yeah. If they, if they registered with us, I mean, these kids that were in early intervention then transitioned out and enrolled with us. Yeah.
Okay.
Does that, does that make sense?
Yes.
It's, it's just coded strange. Like, it's.
But I guess what I want to know is where are they?
They're here.
Are they double counted, though? Are they, are those nine kids also in the numbers for the kindergarten?
Oh, yes, 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 yep.
So then that number was like.
So then our enrollment number.
Like, when you counted down, that nine was double counted?
No, no.
So they're not accounted for in the, the K number?
They're, they're, they are accounted for in, well, some were pre-K, some are K, they're accounted for, the K kids are accounted for in the K numbers, but they're also showing there because they get that level of service.
Okay. And is, that only happens in that level?
Yes, it's just that.
We do not have nine out-of-district kindergartens.
We do not.
Okay. Do we have any?
Uh-uh.
Okay. I was like, wait, that's 12 years.
Yeah, that would be a lot. Yes, no, we do not have those. Would be looking probably a little more frazzled if we had nine out-of-district kids. I know, it's misleading because of how.
Yeah, so that skews the out-of-district number, on that paper, anyway.
It, it does on, when you look at the breakdown by grade level, yeah. I believe the number is 21 presently. I have to double-check.
Not including?
Not including the nine, because those nine aren't really out-of-district kids, so we never put those nine in that bucket.
But we adjust, we adjust for those when we do the district reporting.
So we'll get a better update after October 2nd, too?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, sorry for the confusion on that.
I, I'm sorry, I never asked you before tonight.
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
I, I have thought about it.
No problem. So we'll get a full, in a, in a much deeper overview on September 12th. Jill will be here to present that. Shifting gears to central office, this was, there was a lot of, like, front work that went into this because, as you know, we eliminated two positions from central office, and we reorganized out of the tech department, the tech integration specialist-type position. And so there was a lot of work that had to go into reassigning all of those responsibilities to the existing individuals that are here, and training. So there was a lot of training that happened in the spring with folks that were going to be moving forward, either in the different positions, or be with the district any longer, and so we spent a lot of time learning different systems and, you know, from Teach Point to different things within Aspen, and things we're still seeing and kind of learning that are coming up, like Pearson and our Envisions program, and making sure our teachers and kids are in that. And so, you know, if you were to ask me which of these reorganizations has been probably the bumpiest transition, I would say the central office transition, only because the responsibilities of the individuals that were here were so, like, unique and specific, like, somebody had to learn all of those, or somebodies between Matt, myself, Jill, and Bridgette. So, and Natasha, yeah. So like, there was a small group of us that had to learn that, those different pieces of work. And it's interesting because as much planning as we put it, we had a whole spreadsheet of who was exiting, who was taking on what responsibilities, all the transition meetings as a group, the transition trainings as individuals, I mean, with all of that work, there was still, you know, we were, Matt and I were still loading into Pearson today the, the elementary class list so that the teachers could log in and get the kid account, student accounts up. I mean, even with that, we still had stuff. Bridgette and I were still setting up Teach Point and rolling over the accounts. So I mean, you know, it's, so even with all of that, there was still that level of work. And so.
I was just wondering, I'm just wondering why you guys were doing that. Don't, don't we have somebody that uploads that or information?
We are, we do, but we are very lean. Like, I can't, I keep stressing that, like, we are very, very lean. So in between that, we're also setting up the Empowering Writers Professional Development and.
They're working on a number of other things also, and this was something we really wanted to get moving quickly, so we put together the lists, we got the data formatted properly, and then.
We just did it.
Jason and I were uploading them, so.
Yeah, you just got to.
Now they're ready to go. So as opposed to saying, this is going to take a little longer for it to go through the tech department and figure out who's going to own it right there, and for the long term, that might be a next step, but to just get it going right away, we took it up.
But it's, so it's just, it's things like that. We don't, you know, we, the teachers need to have everything that they needed at their fingertips to work with the kids, in, in the way that we, that they need to, in the way that we want them to. So, you know, it's, so, you know, I guess my point is even with all of the, kind of the prep work that went into that, there's still these kind of one-off things that we're, we're discovering as we go. The HR function has been fantastic, and having an HR specialist, I think, has been just a huge plus to the work, specifically with the depth of knowledge around, you know, benefits and, you know, personnel kind of relation issues. It's been, it's been a really positive piece of the work. And interesting, you know, as much as where we've learned about some of the systems and structures we needed to run more efficient, we found even more, you know, in the HR department through Budget Sense and, you know, just different, making the work, we're working smarter, I guess, and not harder, is really the goal with that. So getting all of our systems and talk to each other and connect with each other has been, and, you know, remains still a work in progress, but has been really, a really positive thing. So we will have a very high-functioning, you know, business office, central office, HR office by the time this is all said and done. I would argue, cutting-edge in terms of where we should be.
So I, am I, would I be wrong to assume that Natasha will be part of the IAC or, in dealing with all of the insurance?
Absolutely. Oh, yes.
Her depth of knowledge in that area is just remarkable.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, so.
Let me step back. No, I'll probably still be involved, but she certainly will take.
That's your baby right now, though.
She'll start, she'll certainly be, be joining us for it.
Yeah, we have a, we have a very strong team in that business office.
Good, great.
Which is really great to see. So, but still, you know, again, still transitioning, so we'll keep working through those issues as they come up. The complex, the AFM, JFKFM complex, the leadership structure we have put in place there, probably not to a surprise of any surprise of folks that have been, you know, in the community for a long time, is just working well. It's a, it's just a really good plan, it makes a lot of sense, and the addition of the, of the planning, teaching, and learning coach at the elementary level has just been awesome. And also at the secondary level, of course, but have heard just really, really positive feedback.
Where is the elementary one housed?
Both schools, so, yep, she has an office in both buildings. And so does Mr. Currie.
He in the both schools.
Yep.
Great.
And the, and the secondary team, the two principals and the coach work, I mean, just side by side, the three of them, and similarly at the elementary level. Yeah, it's, it's pretty great to see that in action, and to see just how receptive the staff have been, which is, which is really, really positive. The teachers are, you know, eager to start working because the, the coaches are going to help them, and they're going to help them with their plans and looking at data and, and how to really use, you know, that data to help meet the needs of the students. So, so that reorganization is working really well. And then the tech department, we brought on a new technician, so it's been, it's been great to have a third technician, you know, kind of boots on the ground, and has really helped with just making sure all of the Chromebooks are up and running and ready, making sure that the tablets for all the second and third graders are going out. So that's been a huge plus, and having our consultant with us, really having the big-picture perspective of where we need to bring our technology in our district, in particular the ed tech, like the teaching and learning part of the work, has been awesome. So, again, not perfect. People are, in that department are still learning, you know, things about our student information system that they never knew. I've been really clear that we don't tell people, I don't know.[1683.58] It's, "I'm not sure yet, but we're going to figure it out." Because there's a lot of stuff that we don't, like, I didn't know how to upload a stu-, you know, a CSV file. I kept calling it CVS, I thought it was a store, you know? But Matt showed me today, he's like, "Oh, you click this, you move this," you'd, you know? And so, we just all keep learning, you know, different pieces of the work. So, but that was, that, that will be a piece we'll have to watch carefully, to make sure we have enough of the, kind of, the leadership work in that department. Right now, we're working with DNG Consulting, I think is one, is it a full day a week? I mean, Dan's on call all the time, but...
Yeah, he and I, he and I just had a meeting on today's Thursday, yesterday. And that was one of the things that we discussed was steps in identifying who owns which piece of technology, and where that's going to live, and who's going to be responsible. And we're in that process right now of identifying all of the different ed tech components, all of the tech tech components, and figuring out who's most appropriate for taking care of each one. And, believe it or not, there's a lot of technology.
There is, yeah.
But we have phones.
And we have, and that's now part of our technology. Do voice-over IP. The entire system is up and running very well.
And I, and I, I will put myself right out there, I'm guilty of this. I said to Matt, "I need you to train me, like, how does this..." I brought Matt and the phone guy in, I'm like, "How do I have to call some, how do I use this?" And Matt's like, "Well, you, you pick it up, and then you dial the number." And I'm like, "Oh, I don't need a nine?" He's like, "No." Just need a one, and then the number. I'm like, "Okay."
And the number.
You know, sure if there's anything different, any nuances there, Sarah?
I don't know about anybody else, but we've waited a long time to know that there were phones forever. And that when you call the line, you got that person to dial three over.
You get the person you're looking for. And the teachers can use the phones to make outbound calls from their classrooms.
Everyone's phone is...
And you don't have to dial nine?
Nope.
Even in the classrooms?
Nope, not in the classroom.
Ooh, we better watch the long-distance bill.
There will be no long-distance bill, because it's...
Oh, it's, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, no, I, I, I take that back. So, it is limited to national calling.
There, there, there's no more long-distance.
If, we will be monitoring that, and there is, there are settings in the software that we can limit the specific area codes that they could call. But I didn't want to start clicking those on right now, because of the fact of our location, that we're crossing into Rhode Island and sections of, and people have cellphones.
Cellphones, some of the cellphones.
Cellphones have...
825s, 9...
Where is that?
Yeah. So, I just wanted to make sure, we wanted to make sure that teachers can still have access to the parents that they need to.
Yeah, so a lot of good, it's, you know, it's interesting, because with all of the, kind of, new, it was still a very smooth launch. And there was a lot of things that could have taken a left turn and that didn't. I think it was the, just the, like, endless conversations and planning and checking in, and the, just the management of every single project to make sure, you know, so far, it's going off well. The things that were not in control, you know, have, have gone that way, so. Just a quick piece that isn't on here, I want to mention the 504 reset. And, and this was a smaller part, but I, but we still wanted to mention that. The principals are taking that on for this year, and we have a Retraining Tuesday, Principals Assistance. And we are bringing the Guidance Counselors and Adjustment Counselors, because they are part of those 504 teams. And Jill, myself, we are, all of us are being retrained together. It's a two-hour training, we are actually bringing in our Special Education Attorney to retrain everybody. So that we are all going to get the same information, the same training, we're doing a big reset. And to be frank, the 504 numbers in our buildings are not huge by any sense. We, we have the breakdown by school, comparatively speaking, to what I've seen some caseloads. So, it, it should not be a heavy lift to manage that this year.
I just want to make sure that the principals are visible and not, not visible. So, if they're going to take on the 504, you know, depending on the caseload, obviously, I want them out and about, I want them available when there's concerns and, and not, they're not here. So, I just want to make that very clear. You know, they have a lot of responsibility.
Yep.
There's no doubt, especially with the new evaluation and observations and, you know, so, you know, giving them the 504, you know, reset is great, but I still want to make it known that they, they really need to be visible to the students, and they need to be visible in the buildings.
Yeah, other than safety, and you can ask any one of them, their top priority are, is to be an instructional leader. And they know that. That is the reason we're, we're pulling in the Assistant Principals and the Guidance Counselors and Adjustment Counselors. So, and, and as a, from a district perspective, Jan Laporte is still overseeing the whole process. So, she will be dealing with any of the, you know, issues that kind of bubble up. Jill will be supporting her with that work as well. So, I think we should be okay. And, at our discussion with the leadership team a few weeks ago, when we laid all this out, the Assistant Principals were absolutely willing to jump in and help, and help carry the load. I mean, there's no issues with that, so.
So, though I, I carry the same concerns as Wendy, it's the principals being visible and being able to, you know, function in their role, I'm actually happy to hear that, that it's that person in the building taking over. I, I feel like that's something that does need attention. Do we have low numbers because the kids aren't in need, or do we have low numbers because the kids
Had no access?
Were sent away?
Yeah, and it could, we don't know.
So, I, I feel like putting those, you know, those people overseeing it, hopefully we catch, and, and, you know, we just get a better cycle for ourselves going. And, or maybe find that we, the kids are where they're supposed to be.
And...
But I think we'll have more confidence in it being that it's that person.
Right. And it doesn't have to be the principals forever, right? So, as, as, when I think about this, this particular piece of work, I think of, like, a gradual release, which is why we're making sure that we're retraining everybody.
It's definitely going to give them a better understanding of it.
Of what it is.
For even when it is released to someone else, they're, you know, and someone comes to them with, "Why didn't my child qualify for a 504?", or "What is a 504?", that person is going to be able to, to, you know, firmly answer that.
And they also see the kids. They get to know the kids. So, having somebody in the outside coming in that don't know the, the child is, is a little, it's, it's worrisome when, and I could be at a meeting and sit there, and you could be talking to somebody who has never met your child before, and having a meeting, which is, which is a little bit nerve-wracking when, when you sit with a principal or a vice-principal, you know that they've seen your child, you know that they've walked in, so at least they have that relationship. So, I, I, I do think it's a good move, but I, and I also think, you know, having the vice-principals there is, is key. You know, because I think, you know, the primary role is obviously, you know, observations and being visible for the principal and the vice-principal. You know, they have roles, but I just want to make sure that somebody's always visible.
I was going to say to your point before, I'm sorry, I was going to say to your point before about the visibility, it also has the impact of them getting to know those particular students and families better, which is a different form of visibility in itself. And those are the kids that may have some of the more significant needs, and parents that have a lot of concerns.
And I, but I will tell you that the kids notice. Kids notice everything, and when they notice that they see the principal, and they notice they see the vice-principal, or... My son just came home and said someone was in the building that was 6'4", was bigger than Uncle Richie, you know? Like, it was like, they notice everything.
Oh, absolutely.
And they also notice, you know, when kids are coming and going, and, you know, I think it's just important to build relationships, be visible, and I just don't want them bogged down to not be able to be visible.
Sure.
You know, so.
That's time management for them.
But they, they do have, like I said, I, I do understand the administrative role and the amount that they have to do, and, and you, you guys as well. So, I just wanted to make sure they were visible.
No, that's a good point, definitely. The, the time management of that's going to be critical, to make sure that they're really using, we call them, kind of, their priorities or buckets of work and their schedule, and making sure that their schedule reflects their priorities for that week. So, absolutely. And then, looking forward into this year, we are going to be spending some time discussing a facilities plan. Before coming here, we were just up on the roof again at the complex, really, like, actually getting under the surface of what's going on up there, and exactly the level of work that needs to be done.
What, you're tearing up the roof already?
No, me? I didn't, I didn't learn that much today.
Instead of tearing up the surface, I was like, "Hold on."
Yeah, not, not literally.
Roof is torn.
I'll have to watch my, what is that, my analogy, terminology, I don't, I don't literally mean ripping up the roof, yet. But, but I only mention that because this will come into play at some point, in terms of what the overall facilities, kind of, outline will, will look like.
Do we have any update on, on the fixing of that roof?
Yeah, so that was part of the, that was part of the meeting before this meeting, in terms of where that stands. And so, I think that the, kind of, quicker version of it is, there, the, the town is looking to repair the leaks anyhow, and starting with that before they start looking at how to replace major sections. There are, I learned today, like, Dan, your dad was great in terms of, like, really going over pieces of this with me.
Roofing lesson?
Yeah, I, I, like, we need to know this. So, I, you know, asked if he would take me up to really show me, like, what are the big pieces, so we could kind of tease all that out. There's a lot of work that needs to be done.
Wow.
Yeah. So, I think the first phase is to actually repair the, the leaks first, and then look at how do we replace sections of that.
The new roof.
Yes.
Yeah, their entire section is a new roof.
So unfortunate.
Yeah, there's a lot of work. And, and, you know, of course, I'm not a roofer by any sense, and I'm looking at this, and I'm like, "That, that looks like a bubble." And he's like, "Yeah, that's not supposed to be there." I'm like, "Okay," and I'm thinking, like, "Well, there's a lot of those." And there were, there was a lot of places where the adhesive either wasn't laid, or it's, yeah, it's already bubbled up, and the seams aren't where they're supposed to be. And you can, you know, you can understand why there are some significant leaks in that. So, the idea is to do a, I think, a repair.
For the major parts that are...
And then, look at how do we start replacing sections and the process for that.
Is that under four warranty?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Then proceed.
We'll keep you updated on that for sure.
Thanks, Sarah. A stamp of approval.
So, there will be included in the facilities plan, will be that level of work, too. But, you know, we need to start looking at, at what, what do we want to do with our, with our buildings? And, obviously, there's a direct connection to our Regional Agreement Amendment Committee. But, that being said, I, you know, I think we have to start those discussions now.
We do.
Yeah.
And, and it has to be in a, in a timeline. It has to be, you know, it can't be all of a sudden, "Oh, broke, we need this now, oh, broke, we need this," you know? Roof is leaking, we needed a roof, windows are leaking, we need windows. You know, it, it needs to be systematic. Where do, you know, where do we see the biggest need? And how do we address, just like we're doing curriculum, this year this thing, this year this thing.
Yep.
You know, this year this thing, and, and lay it out. I mean, you know, three years, five years, I don't know how many years you go out, but, but it needs to go out some length of time, so towns can prepare, so.
Yeah. Absolutely, that's the goal for that piece of work. We're also going to be doing a deep dive into transportation. This, that work has actually already started, in terms of looking at routes and mapping out the distance for each one of our riders, and making sure that those are being mapped out correctly for reimbursement purposes, looking at capacity of the buses. So, there's, there's a lot that needs to be done on that. Even how we put out bus routes to families, there need to be estimated times at each of the stops. There needs to be a drop-off set of bus schedules. So, parents know, if I have to pick up my first grader, I need to be here around 2:20 or, you know, 3:40, or whatever time it is. So, there's a lot of work that we're going to be doing in that area as well. And that has actually already started, so we'll have more to come on that. And, the building safety, of course, is an ongoing issue. I don't know if, Matt, if you want to talk a little bit about that? I know we did it at the last meeting, but if you have any updates on that piece?
Sure. With regards to the building safety, we have a few big pieces to that, which is the hardware, the people, and then the plans. And we're working, we're working on every aspect of it. So, at the, starting at the beginning of the year, and then moving through the year, Jason and I met with the resource officers and the towns. They've looped the police chiefs in about us starting our exercises around lockdown slash active shooter drills. No one likes to say it, but we need to practice them and really solidify our plans, including reunification plans and what that looks like. And we have plans drawn out through the course of the year where we'll start with the training for the leadership team, bring that to faculty meetings, then we're going to do some tabletop exercises at each building. And then, we will meet with all of the appropriate people on the town level, which might include DPW, all of the people that we might, we might use as reunification sites, like, tellstones. There's a lot of, there's a lot of pieces to it. And we'll have a meeting, and we'll set up a plan to do an actual drill at some point before, we're hoping to do it before, by the beginning of the, by the beginning of the new year.
Yes, yep.
To run the whole active drill. And we would notify the towns of that.
Absolutely. But... And it's extensive.
It's extensive.
But we need to be, you know, prepared, and for lack of a better, you know? But we have to be. And so, and we need to know where our strengths are, where our gaps are, and we need to know how every one involved in this is going to function.
Exactly.
And so, yeah, I mean, there'll be a lot of information about all this.
Is that drill with or without kits?
With kits.
Yeah.
By January, January 2020, or next school year?
No, we're this year.
Okay.
This school year, we're, yeah, this year we're hoping to have an active drill with the, in, an entire school involved.
I think that's long coming, that they think that should have happened.
A lot of schools have already done it.
You, you embed it like a fire drill now.
Yep.
And it's happens as often as a fire drill, at least in, in, we do it as often. So, the kids are like a fire drill, "Oh, it's fire," like, it's just part of our routine at this point. The way we talk about it is very different, but it is embedded in our safety plan on a regular basis. And I don't think, I can't recall the last time there was an actual practice of a lockdown. So, I think it's really important.
Yeah, and you talk about it different, differently with the different age groups of kids.
Yes, of course.
There are a lot of, oddly, not oddly enough, I guess it's appropriate, but there's a lot of children books available to use, you know, as literature to talk to kids about it, and, you know, younger kids about it. And there's different, there's a different protocol for the older kids, and how to prep them for something like that, and walk them through. And then, you do an after-action and debrief with the kids and the teachers and everybody else involved, but...
Yep.
And a lockdown, a lockdown could be for anything. It doesn't necessarily have to be for an active shooter, it could be, you know, a, a child that has taken off, you know? Or as, you know, there's, there's so many different avenues for a lockdown, that, you know, you can look at it in so many different ways.
Yeah, they're different, they're different plans, they're actually, they're different plans. So, there is a lockdown plan, and then there's active shooter steps.
You may, you may leave the building.
And then administrative, I mean, there's...
Yep, well, protocol. Absolutely, absolutely.
That was one of the things that Matt and I did, was when we met with the SROs from the, the two communities, was to just get common language. And that was, that was huge. So, we, the four of us, like, you know, have a, like, a very clear understanding of what lockdown means versus, you know, the...
There's an active shooter in the building.
And there's a run, hide, and fight protocol, which is different than lockdown. It could include a lockdown, but it's not solely just a lockdown drill. So, I think coordinating that discussion was huge, and, you know.
We also, I'm sorry, I didn't want to...
Is this an extension of the Alice training?
I was just going to ask that. I was like, most around town, I'm looking at Alice training.
Or is this something that we...
This, well, Alice is a trademarked program.
It's like a product.
It's a product. And that's really what it's become. It's, they sell their materials, and they sell their equipment. We do have Alice-trained individuals in the district, and we have, both of our resource officers are Alice trainers. This is really more the strategies that we're going to use in the district.
Which is the run, hide, fight.
Run, hide, fight protocol.
Instead of drop, roll.
Yeah. We also, again, there's multiple pieces to the security plan. We're also, as you know, we're looking at the security systems that we're putting into place. And we're going to try to make sure that the, the base of a larger system is installed and operable in each of the buildings. And then, we can look year to year to add to them. So, we may not have as many cameras as we want in the high school at this point in time by the end of this round, but the system is in place to add the cameras or the security sensors. Same will be with every single one of the other buildings. And we're also, we've been looking at modifications to the actual buildings themselves. I need to, I've been, I'm reaching out to, I should say, architects right now, with the help of one of the owners, project managers that we were working with, because we have some designs that we're looking at possibly adding a secure vestibule to the high school, which would be a little bit more of a construction piece than a security system.
I'm sad to say I don't know the answer to this, but our resource officers, does Massachusetts require them to be in the school a certain amount of the day, or all day?
So, we have a, the Attorney General, a couple of years ago, came out with a, a model memorandum of understanding between the school department and the police department. So, that doesn't, and in that memorandum, which both the chief and I signed, it does, it does not specify a particular number of hours, but the assumption is that their day is, is the school day. Like, it's your seven-to-three day is in the schools. So, and our, our SRO, our School Resource Officer is, in, particularly between the middle school and high school, but does assist at the elementary as well when necessary. And I know that the Millville SRO starts his day there, most days, is there greeting the kids, and he's very visible. I see him there all the time, sign of he's very visible.
Because New York just passed a, if the school is open, the resource officer is in the building.
Okay, nothing like that yet, yep, to that degree.
And every school, whether it's pre-K or...
Each building has their own.
Everybody has their own, every single building.
Are the, do you know, well, I wonder if they're employees of the district or...
Police Department?
Yeah, they'd have to be, stay with the police department.
Police Department?
I have seen a...
They've hired a lot of, like, retired police officers to come back.
Because I've seen hybrids, where high schools in particular, and larger middle schools will hire their own security officers in addition to...
Different.
Yeah, which is very different.
Yeah, that's different.
But in addition to your actual SRO.
There's a bunch of different models. I know in New York City, they, the police department trains school security officers. They're not full fledged police officers, but then they're positioned in all of the in of the buildings.
My first concern would be contact to pull in reinforcement. So if you're, if you're a school employee versus a police officer, you know, who are you calling on that radio?
Yep.
Yeah, they're, they're.
Right.
Well, yeah, and to that point, though, every school does have access to communicate directly with the, with the police station. In fact, I say that, that was not the case. That came up as part of the conversation, that each of the buildings in Blackstone has, has a radio that can communicate directly to the police channel. When, in our conversation, Blaine was saying that he was going to discuss with the chief, making sure that we get one in Millville, because there wasn't currently one there. But there will be.
Okay. Should be.
Yeah.
So that, as you can tell, you know, the hardware, the, you know, humanware, the kind of person side and the plans is, is a major emphasis for us.
Yeah.
And then, of course, the last part is really looking at the budget timeline and in that, you know, thinking through that timeline, which is a great segue to our next topic. But, you know, I think one of the things in having spent a lot of time reflecting over the summer on just the incredible amount of work that was done with the committee, thinking about that budget piece, because it was, you know, once we got into it, like, we were into it. And it was, it seemed to, you know, our, all of our subcommittees and, yeah, it kind of took over. And it was, how did we think about doing that, you know, differently? I wouldn't say better, I just different. You know, I think we had a really great process and everybody was, you know, relentlessly committed to it, but what do we do?
Right. And I know we have been asked by the communities to try to up that timeline, to kind, to start it earlier. And having really watched it now, you know, over a few years and systematically this year, I worry that if we go too soon, we just don't have accurate information.
I agree.
And then when, and then when things change, you know, we're.
Why it changed.
Right, or, you know, we're, we're up a creek without a paddle. I was going to say it differently, but I'll say it that way. But, you know, because we've committed to that, and now, oh, this has changed. And I don't think we can go to the last minute either. I think there's a good balance there, but, you know, I guess I worry about too soon. And I think we have to be cautious as we look at that timeline to keep very similar to what we did.
And I don't think we want to create fear when fear isn't necessary, you know, and I think, you know, right away, you know, we, we worry. I mean, I, I know, I do, and I know all of us do. When you start in February, you start worrying, and you perseverate over every decision that we make in February. Can you imagine starting that any earlier? I don't see that being beneficial for anybody. And a lot of numbers come out in movement and enrollment, and I think that you can't move that up any further than what it already is. I think last year's rollout was really well played. I mean, I don't know how much earlier you can get when you reach, the end of February is.
Any earlier, we're just cooking without ingredients.
That's right. And you're putting fear in, you know, what's going to happen, what, who's going to not be here? And I think that doesn't need to happen until the certainty. Could it be done more efficiently? Everything can be done more efficiently on a regular basis, but.
Right. Well, and we do have in, in place already what we said would be phase two. So there is a sense, you know, for the communities of, you know, kind of.
They've laid that out.
Phase two. And so, you know, I think as we develop this year, which is phase two, we need to give them a sense of phase three, but, but, you know, we need to not feel the pressure of starting in November.
Yeah.
Because I agree with you, we'd be like.
And we all, we have, you know, we, there's a whole different set of things that go on in November and October and planning and goal setting and, you know, there's a stage per year and I, throughout the year, and I feel like that needs to take a good chunk of the beginning of the year, whereas the budget, there's a certain time to really focus on the budget. So if you start mixing all these things, it just turns into just, it's too much.
And there are tremendous pieces of the budget that we can't get the information any sooner. We talk about the insurance advisory committee, insurance, right, insurance companies aren't going to start releasing their rates till later in the year, though we do have a good idea this year of where things stand because we have a lock in or not going over a certain rate, which is terrific.
I don't think they do that anymore.
Yeah.
Matt brokered that deal.
I don't think they did that anymore. It's good to know.
Yeah. But also, as Jane mentioned, the fact that we started last year with the target of having this two-year phase in and getting to the place where we were creating something sustainable. So we're changing this, the configuration of things, as you see, but the plan is, once we get to where we need to be by the end of this next, you know, the next budget year, then it's hopefully just maintaining.
Right. And I think our town administrator did mention that. He wants some type of phase in concern. So I think, you know, as long as we follow what we've been doing, I think we're doing what, what the town is, at least I can only speak for blacks, I can't speak for Millville, but I remember that, saying we need to have a phase in plan so that we know and we can plan accordingly. So I think if we're doing that, I mean, that's all that can be asked, is that we have that phase in.
Yeah. And on our budget documents, we, it literally said, I think it said phase two.
Two.
And it actually laid out what the.
I'm sure there will still be people that say, where did this, where did this come from?
I see it.
Oh, you missed that last year on phase two.
Well, that's okay. So like, so we, like, recorded everything, so we can just send a wave to the video. We still have all that.
All right, I have an archived copy of the email I sent you on that day.
Even the.
But I think the only new person to the table is the Millville town administrator.
Yes.
Everyone else should really remember it.
Yeah.
You know, that I believe all the faces are the same.
And to his credit, he's been really reaching out to the district and working closely with us on a bunch of stuff. And he's really trying to learn what he needs to and come up to speed, so.
He even sent a nice, just like, you know, good luck with the launch fellows, like, kind of emails, really nice, yeah, like a nice.
Yep, absolutely.
It was very much.
It was very nice of him to do that, wishing us a good year and.
Yeah.
It's great.
It was really good. So that's probably a good segue into the next topic. Jane, you want to take a?
Stab?
Yeah, you want to take a stab at this part? It's a big piece.
So, so what Bridget put together for us was really all of last year's meetings and kind of what we addressed at what points in time. And we wanted to use that to really say, you know, what has to continue as our focus? What new has to be added into our focus? And it's not the blueprint for success, it's not the, you know, school improvement plans. What do we as a committee want to focus our attention, our, our efforts, our energy on so that the community feels we're transparent, we're informing, we're participating as the governance body that we should be? Like, what, you know, what are those things that are on here? What are the things that, you know, we, we have all made our comments as we go along, like, facilities definitely needs to be a focus and stuff like that. But, you know, as we look through this stuff, what are those things that we should be updating people about every meeting or, you know, at least the first meeting of the month, that we should be maybe having workshops around or maybe bringing people in to help us with? And that, and there may be nothing for that, but, you know, I'm just thinking, where do we want this to go? What's this year? What, what does it look like? You know, the leadership team did their goal setting in workshop, and this is kind of our, and it'll be brief, I mean, it won't be, you know, like a four hour workshop. What do we, what is, what do we want? What do we want to accomplish? What's important?
And so these are just all the things that we.
All the things we did.
The big ticket things that we did last year.
Was November really the first time we talked about your goals?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, because he did his.
We did the data.
Or the in, the.
That was in.
Entry plan was after.
Entry plans.
We did the data in October, and then we did the goals. Because we, which, and Wendy and I had a really good conversation about that whole timeline that we had talked about too, Jane.
Yeah, and so just so, I don't know that anybody knows other than Wendy and I, but Wendy had agreed to take on the goal setting with Jason and evaluation process. And the two of us were going to try to meet, and as the, the three of us, and as summer goes, Wendy and Jason met. It was great. It was fabulous.
Do you already have a timeline?
A little bit of an adjustment of the timeline, I'm just trying to find it right now, only because the state testing doesn't come out to a certain point. So to, to actually talk about the superintendent evaluation based off of data, it's hard to do that at the end of June, when the data comes out at a certain point in September. So in order to goal set based off of data, Jason and I, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't have my stuff, but Jason and I talked about, you know, in October, yeah, moving and adjusting the evaluation, because the evaluation will be piggybacked based on his goals, you know, will, will drive the goals, and the data will drive the goals. So if we're doing this work in June without any data, it, it's kind of a struggle to wrap all that in. I think the October, November conversation is still important to still roll it out with the same timeline, but I think if you're, if we're going to take the superintendent evaluation and do something with that, we can't do it in June. We actually have to move it to, you know, September after the state data comes, because that's what's going to drive the goals. So if we're asking them to do goals any earlier without data, they're not goals. So we did have that conversation, and we were going to bring it to the committee, but I didn't have a chance to touch base with the chair yet.
Yeah, yeah. Jane had, so.
But I, I felt like I wanted to be a part of that conversation, just because I, I met with Jason, so I think it's important, but I hope I was able to.
Absolutely, yeah, that's definitely. We discussed, we discussed the idea of.
A shift.
Yeah, like an October 1 to a September 30, like.
Right, because we, and we even talked even January to, you know, December, because.
I was just going to say other.
Because we, you know, we don't have to do fiscal year.
Right, yep.
Like, we can do calendar year, we can do, you know, we don't, it's, nothing has to be tied. And the, the state, I don't even know if it's the state or MASC is piloting a new superintendent evaluation process. So I sent that to Wendy and asked her to read it. No, I did read through it, but I don't know if you did or not.
This weekend, it's on my list.
It doesn't look, it really doesn't look tremendously different.
No.
It explains it so much better. From a school committee standpoint, it, it literally says, here's what you're looking for.
I think it's an adjustment, because it's very hard to take the rubric and, and weigh what the superintendent does unless you have a real understanding of all of those indicators. And so what specifically is the role of the superintendent and what they have to do? So I, I think it's just really breaking it down to.
And it's, and it separates what the superintendent's supposed to do in terms of administration versus what the superintendent's supposed to do in terms of government and how, governance, and how the school committee's supposed to look at that. So it really says, if you're looking at this, this, you know, factor, 1A, 3, whatever, here's the focus that, and it really tells you what you're looking for, what, you know, what, what needs to be in this thing. So we'll go through that a lot more, and, and if we all like it, we'll bring it to everybody if we want to, you know, try to pilot. We've been invited to do so, because we have to fill out or whatever. But if we decide not to and we stick with the same way, but, but I do think we need further discussion about timeline and what makes sense and.
Yeah. I think we can probably get that together and bring that to one of our September meetings so we can get the ball rolling on that.
Yeah.
And there would have to be an adjustment to the contract language as well.
Yeah.
Right, with the dates, the specific dates.
And the language, and a little bit of.
I would be curious, and maybe you know already, the, any other superintendents in your induction program, are they on a fiscal year or a calendar year, or do you not know?
No, they're all in the school year.
They are school year.
Yep. But, but, you know, I, I don't know, from my perspective, I, it's almost, when I was sitting back and thinking about the evaluation, it was, we used the STAR data, which was helpful, but, you know, you didn't have all the pieces. And I don't want the school committee to say, you know, which, which you did, and that was okay, that was just the way the timeline set up, which was, you know, which is the way it was, but I'm not really sure about this yet. I need this piece of information first. It's hard to determine because I don't have all, you know, and it was, there were just pieces, and most of it was just that summative, like that MCAS data, but.
Well, because you identified it as state data.
Yes.
To your goal.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Whereas if we had said STARS, we would have.
Right. So that was my, the way I framed the goals, you know, was my issue for sure.
But we all know that our communities are holding us accountable for state data, not STAR data.
Correct.
State data.
Absolutely.
And so if they're holding us accountable for state data, we need to hold our administrators accountable for state data, and they need to hold the leadership team, and they need to hold the teachers. I mean, it needs to work that way.
I mean, STARS, STARS is a, is a program.
It's a tool.
It's a tool.
It's a tool.
Exactly. And everybody in the state of Massachusetts has the same, I don't know what you want to call it, but they all have to, they all have, we all have to use MCAS data. So even though we can use STARS to guide the instruction, I think we all need to have the same level, level playing field.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
In my last, in my last position, the executive director was evaluated in January.
Yeah, yeah. I.
And I actually, in my position, I wasn't evaluated until after October, which is.
I would be curious.
When all of the, end of the year financial.
Your evaluation this year was before mine, which was, yeah, which was.
And that's after October is when all of the end of the year financial reports are submitted and we see where we stand.
I, I just think the October rollout just makes sense when you're trying to piggyback an evaluation and the information on the evaluation and roll it into goals and roll it into.
That was the way we sequenced to each.
Yeah, so I just.
I was just saying what I'm saying.
I would be curious how they would set their goals if they don't have it until January. I'm just, I would be interested in.
It was on a, it was, the director's goal was on.
Oh, the director.
The director's goals were on a calendar year, and my goals were almost, they were just past the fiscal year.
The reporting year.
The reporting year.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, so we had discussed in October, evaluation from the prior school year.
Correct.
Because then the data's public.
It would be after the presentation of the MCAS.
Of the data, right. So there would be the presentation of the data, an evaluation of my performance, and then goal setting for that school year, like, right, is that kind of a sequence we had talked about?
Yeah, so we're talking like November.
But goal setting for that school year when you're already three months in.
But, but it's.
We have the preliminary data.
Leading to, so following October.
That's what I was saying, like, all the principals have all that and they're using it.
Right.
We just can't share it publicly.
Following, I'm sorry, you just gave a timeline.
So, so if you, if you have the data released, you have a review of the data, October, you're setting goals in October.
You're evaluating, then you're evaluating.
And then you're using that evaluation to move forward the next time you're setting goals. I mean, you are into November, December, or even, you know, I don't know.
And teacher's smart goals, my smart goals are due October 21st, and November 1st is my plan. So, teachers have till, so I don't know what the timeframe is here, but it's November, it is November.
It's later.
Because you have to know the kids in front of you and.
I like November better than January.
I do, too.
Like, you come back after Christmas, and now you're going to put goals into place.
Yeah, I think, in the part, I think I want to just underscore is that we, like, we have this information in July and August, and we're already using it.
And how are you feeling?
So, yeah, so it's just embargoed.
That's in a couple of weeks.
So, we just can't, we can't talk about it publicly, and so I say that only to say, like, we're not waiting till November to set goals, like, we've already set our goals, and we've actually already meant to talk about what those goals need to look like, and so, like, all of that front work happens. Maybe a better way to say it is the actual public release of all that information kind of happens on that timeline.
Well, and tweaks, if there needs to be tweaks, if there needs to, it allows for opportunity to do.
And we could, we could actually look at it, I wasn't even thinking of this when we met, but you could actually, he could share his evidence on his, on the standards, as long as they're not tied to the state, to state, to state data. So, you know, standard, standard three, community engagement, we don't need to wait till October to do that, so we can do a little bit of the front work in the summertime, because it is lighter on us. But I think, you know, the overall end result of the evaluation should, in my opinion, come after the state data, because that's what we're all tested on, and there's that equal playing field. But in terms of standards, you know, three and four could easily be reviewed in, you know, in those summer months.
Well, and, and it would break it down nicely, too, so that you're not having this entire document in front of you at one time, thinking, okay, I just said that for number three, do I say the same thing for, let me be creative and come up with something different to say? You know, you're saying it as you're seeing it, as it's available, as it's, and, and, you know, it would take some work to then gather it all together, but not tremendously, and.
It's already spinning, so what we could do, I'm just kidding, it's like that July, you could have a workshop, and we could talk about, you know, what might have been presented in standard three and four, and only specifically break it down into subcategories, so that you can, you know, categorize it and say, okay, I don't need to look at, you know, standard one and two, or whatever, these standards, let's focus on this.
Yep. And, and, yeah, I, so I do like that kind of shift, but it means shifting the contract, it means shifting our timelines.
Systems, systematic.
It's doable.
It's definitely doable, as long as we make that change soon, like, in the next.
Yeah, and it's an advantage to all of us, the whole district, I believe, I believe. So, that's where we are with that. But, other topics that are in here. I mean, we know facilities is huge, safety, transportation, using the transportation system we purchased is really exciting.
So, this is where it gets a little.
We're getting there.
Where it gets a little dicey between, you know, roles, so I might say something that you might tell me that, okay, that's not our role.
It's not us.
You might, and it is okay, but what I feel, and there might be a need for, I think Jason does an extraordinary job communicating with us, and I think he does an extraordinary job, you know, communicating, you know, through newsletters and Venmo, and, you know, how do we break that down to communication through the schools? How can we get the schools to communicate as much as you do? That, that's.
To the parents?
To the parents, to the community, to the parents. Yes, we have, this is in place, we have the father-daughter, you know, we have all those things in place, but the actual, what are our children doing in school? What are they doing in the classroom? How, you know, I think, how can we get that to the community? Just what he does, but on, on the next level, to the next level, and I, and you can tell me, I'm, I'm just thinking, that's just one of my thoughts.
So, one of our focuses last year was intended to be community, and Jack and I talked one day about it, you know, and trying to get more in the newspaper, trying to get more letters, trying to get more school information, and we.
So, I'm okay with saying, okay, good. I just feel like, it's one thing to say, we, I mean, you have all these, these, you know, District of One things, and they're awesome, but how can we let the, you're almost selling yourself, you're selling the schools, we need to get these, we need to get these kids back in district, so how can you sell those schools with the communication to the parents on a regular basis of what their children are doing on a daily basis? Not daily, it could be monthly, I mean, it doesn't have to be, you know, it just, I feel like you need to live in the school. You want these parents to see what's going on in the schools.
So, I feel like we have that from Jason for a district, and what you're saying is we need that, we need little, little buildings underneath him, so we have the district.
That's disturbing.
We need the middle school, you need the culture coming out of there.
So, I work in a college, and of course, the college does, you know, a weekly, here's what's happening in the college, but then our, our division does, here's what's happening in our division.
Yes.
So, you know, it's like, here's what's happening in the district.
We knew what you meant.
And it can be, you know, it can be, you know, very simple, I mean, it can be a newsletter or, you know, whatever, but, you know, spotlight a teacher each time.
Absolutely.
Unique things they're doing in their classroom, or spotlight a student, I mean, we're going away from final exams and projects, spotlight a student's project or whatever.
Well, and spotlight, spotlight what that looks like.
Right.
Because they, they may come home and say, we have no more final exams, but they have, they have no idea.
Which it already is.
It already hit, it hit the news.
So, but if we could head it off, or.
But I will say, it hit the news.
And it wasn't.
It was quite positive, actually.
Yes, it was.
Oh, good.
I think it was bad, but, but again, that's an example of, of what does this look like in the school? You know, like, I feel like, I think that piece is a very big piece, it could even be on a school improvement plan, but I would love to see, what does that look like? How are you communicating to our community, so that our kid, I mean, it even helps the kids with anxiety when the parents can have conversations. It has, you know, what did you do today? Did you see so-and-so? When there's, I just think that that is something that, you know, is an area that I would, I would like to see, and obviously, that conversation took, I wasn't here last year, but there needs to be more of that. We need to celebrate, and we need to see those things in the school, and spearhead some of those things that we, you know, we hear.
We need the principals in front of a green screen.
Or even a newsletter.
You want to see the kids and the teachers in front of the camera.
Mrs. Kurt sends out newsletters all the time.
I will tell you.
Mrs. Kurt.
Mike does, too.
Yeah.
But not on, but it's not consistent, what I'm saying is, is the consistency.
You don't know where to go to look for the information.
So, I will tell you that.
Mrs. Kurt's there monthly.
And I get that it's a private school, I get that, but I will tell you that every Sunday at 5:00, like, it is clockwork, every Sunday at 5:00, out comes the Mount Minute, and it'll say on the top, this will take more than a minute, but it's like, here are the important things that you need to know, and then here's the activity, you know, the things that are going on, and here's the, you know, all the contacts of new phone numbers if you need to reach people for certain things, but it's like, every Sunday, like, every Sunday, it's, it's there in my, and I can choose to ignore it, and I can choose to read it, and, you know, whatever, but it's like, it is clockwork, it is.
But I think Jason has that, too, as administrators, every Sunday morning, or, I mean, you gave us examples of it.
Yep.
But it stops there, so.
Right, right.
Pushing it further out would be the, I think, is what you're.
But so, asking them to do it is not our.
It's not, which I, and I'm not saying.
You know, having us develop some piece that we can, you know, I don't know what.
Yeah, and I think on that note, we are going to be working with Aptige, it's a, it's the new, will be our new web and mobile app, web service provider and mobile app. Actually, Matt and I and Dan Saltzman have a call with them next week to start giving them the information they need to set everything up. So, we will have a real mobile app, like, you can get us in the App Store, and it will have a live feed system, where all parents will need to do is literally download the app, and it's not a link to our website, like, that's separate, it's an actual mobile app that's set up like your banking app or anything else you have, and, but there are, there are like some key features that I think could help with some of.
You can get on the portal?
Yeah, well, like, with pushing out the information to families, you know, there's a, even something as simple as a live feed, where, you know, say, the principals will all have the, you know, whatever the access code is, they can type out whatever information to families, and it goes out to the district feed, so anybody that has the app, will get the push, you'll get a push notification.
Well, like, we got the texts this morning, I don't even know how I, that's the.
That's the one call text. Yeah, Matt and I send those right from our phones, like, it's really simple.
But I think that's a little different than what I'm.
More personalized.
It's more personalized, and it's more selling the schools, because, I mean, how many kids did we have leave our district to charter, or, like, how are we going to get them back? And I know that school committee is, how can we get them back into our, into our school district by showcasing on a regular basis, this is what we see, because what you see is what's going to sell. So, if you're seeing, oh, look at that, look at what just happened, and look at these teachers, oh, I want my son or my daughter to go there, that, that's the piece that I'm saying, okay, how can we get this out there? What are they, what are we doing to do that?
Yeah, and I think Jason was just expressing that this is potentially one valuable piece of that work.
Sure, that's very, yeah, absolutely.
And, and like, some of the features are, you know, it pushes out to social media directly, so principals can have their app on their phone, take a video of what's going on in the classroom, or, you know, a conversation with a student, and that can go out immediately, like, through the, through the app, you know, stuff like that, like, science fairs and whatever is happening in the school buildings. And again, that's just one piece.
And it's one, exactly.
One piece, it's like, it's a phase.
But I do think we could have a, you know, a small group of people who really have interest in, in how do we do this, and maybe it goes back to the, you know, every school committee meeting, having some, you know, five, 10 minutes, but some kids in front of us, students, kids, students in front of us. You know, every, if there's, you know, just a school newsletter, if we can get, you know, even if we're doing it, and we, you know, each, whoever does it has the liaison to this school, and the liaison to that school, and, you know, here's, we're spotlighting somebody, we're doing this, you know, I, if, I don't know, but I do think we need to focus that on a group, you know, again, if that's a priority for everyone, a group of people willing to actually tackle that, because I don't think we can say, okay, that's our priority, tackle that.
No, but I also think as part of the evaluation tool, to be quite frank, it's a standard three, and we all need, it's just an area that needs growth, and I think we have the perfect, we have a leader that demonstrates that.
Uses it, right.
You know what I'm saying, like, so I just think, you know, I think that that's just an important, that was just.
I agree with Jane, too, though. We have student reps here, but that's from the high school. Why middle, I've had middle school reps at school committee meetings, and why can't there be reports from the elementary schools? Not to say that we're going to have the elementary kids here till 9:00 at night, but, you know, again, to your point, ways to integrate it.
Correct. Well, and I, and I do think, do we have school reps? Do we have?
Yeah, actually, Bridgette just outreach Mike for the names, yeah.
Because I, I would like to see us, as a group, be more engaged with them. You know, it's like, these are the sports, these are the band things, these are, you know, we had, oh, we had our open house, we had our orientation, these are the things, okay, thanks, goodbye. And if, you know, we ask questions, but there, you know, somehow, we have to change why they come, like, what, you know, dialogue, or, you know, what's happening, or what's, because we've, we've had some, and I think even when Jack was here, or when Eric Eisner was, it was just more collegial, whereas the last couple have just been like, yep, yep, report, you know, like, three things, I have it on the list, I read them as best as I could, I took a breath, and I left.
When was it, junior, will she be back with us?
I don't know.
I don't know, yeah, I'm waiting to hear.
It is nerve-wracking for the kids.
It is.
But if you give them a list ahead of time.
I was going to say, maybe you give them questions in advance, that the committee's looking to have the community hear about, then they can prepare for it a little.
I think we should have them present their midterm and final projects that are now becoming part of the curriculum.
Well, but somebody, I mean, not to be them, but somebody.
Like I said, it could be, that could be high school podcasts, could be with our technology department at the elementary, you know, there's so many different ways to sell your school, because they're so unique in what they do, I just think it would be a benefit to our district to try to keep these kids.
We need to showcase the student, you know, side of the work way better than what we're doing, you know, for instance, the makerspace at the complex is unbelievable, like, absolutely unbelievable, and, you know.
I saw that at a glance on the Facebook parent page, that it was posted, it was really nice, they did a really nice job.
So, clearly.
That was just.
One area. Do we have other areas? Clearly, we have Sarah's rack.
Oh, God.
And that's not to be taken personally.
Wow.
I had something, it's gone.
So, if it's up here and we still want it, should we tell you?
Yes, 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 yes.
Sarah.
You know, what do we want to care about? What do we want to focus our efforts on? What do we want to work on? What do we want to make sure we, you know?
So, in addition to.
Obviously, like, transportation, obviously budget, obviously facilities.
School committee rapidly devolves.
Evaluation.
I like hearing about their goals, and reading their goals, saying, did they return this year to talk about how they did? I don't, I like hearing about that, like, the progression, yeah. It doesn't have to be lengthy, just how, how's it going?
What's, I missed that.
Like, you know, they were distracted.
Everybody for a loop, I'm sorry.
What just happened?
Hearing from the principals on their goals.
Just how they're doing, like, just write out, I mean, it doesn't have to be, you know, formatted, just how's it going, not where, you know, just those honest, open dialogue.
I talked to Jason, too, that we have to shift, again, a timeline issue, but the way that, you know, school, what are they called, not this, not us, the school committee, not the parent, what's the other?
Stakeholders?
No, the, the, the.
The school.
Oh, my God.
Council?
Yeah, the school council, how, you know, they operate with the principals, like, handbook issues, and we shouldn't get it in Ju, or May or June, we shouldn't get it in a meeting, be expected to read it overnight, or, you know, in two nights, and, and, I mean, we didn't have time to really process, you know, no final exam schedule, although I am very supportive of it, I will continue to be very supportive of the new philosophy, but we didn't, we didn't have time to educate ourselves.
I agree.
And so, we, so we need to really look at the, you know, kind of this thing, the timelines of that need to back up, like, it needs to back up. So, parents, one of the things that is happening in the regional agreement is part of the new thing, says, if we're going to make some changes, we're going to let the community be aware, we're going to have, you know, open forum, or public forum, or public hearing, or whatever you call those things, but, you know, and people will have a chance to have a voice. Well, the same thing should be true of, of handbook changes or rules, they're ultimately administrative changes, they ultimately are, but, you know, there's some significant things that impact families that want to take vacation in March, when it's not vacation time, and what that means for your time, you know, making sure people have an opportunity that it's presented, then you have an opportunity to think about it, then we respond, not a, it's presented and we respond.
Well, and, and we're questioning our own thinking.
Correct.
Publicly.
Right.
Like, I think we need to be able to absorb something like a handbook, and send the questions so that they're, you know, they're shared, so that it gives people, you know, whoever presents those handbooks, time to say, okay, this is, these are their questions, and we need to answer them, because I'm sure that the public has the same kind of questions, but to do that, it just starts to get confusing.
Yeah, and, and, and the same thing, not just handbook, but, now, I've lost the train of thought, there was something else that comes in front of us that really just needs more vetting, I don't remember what it was.
Oh.
But it was there, it was right there.
Uh.
So, we can look to back, we can look to back to that.
But I think, I think the, what was presented here is timely, I think the goals were timely, I think the, the updates.
I would like to see, and we had it a few years ago, but I think it does become an important part of our discussion during budget season, the extracurricular activities, so, sports captains, and I think we should include music, just getting down to, you know, having those kids come in and letting us know what they're doing in jazz band, or boys tennis, or, you know, those types of updates.
Showcasing their work.
So, it's not just a number on a page to us.
It should almost be every, every, at least every camera meeting, you know, every first of the month, you know, there should be a showcase, a showcase of, you know, and it doesn't have to, you know, be high school.
But I think it's important for us, when it becomes budget season, and it's, oh, what is this, what is this stipend for? I mean, having the kids in front of us that are affected by something that only has six kids in a group, or, you know, or they need, you know, maybe they have ideas on how to get more kids involved in boys tennis.
Or a kid demonstrating the use of an oscilloscope.
Yes.
So, we don't all sit here and go, what?
I'll Google that, what? I'll Google.
I know we've had, we've done it, but it's very sporadic, because we've had robotics in here, we've had, so.
Yeah, we had the makerspace, we had the kids do their, their science animals, or whatever that was, but, you know, we have, but we just, it's not systematic, it's not showcasing, right, and it's, yeah.
Well, the one year we did bring in the, we brought the captains in after every season.
Correct.
But we never touched music. We never, so I think it should be. Especially because that became a stipend discussion for us at the end of this budget year.
But again, going back to, you know, our primary role is we wanna keep these kids in district. And with the charter school discussion of another one and another charter. But, but, so we're seeing more schools pop up, we're seeing more school choice. So how are we going to get students to stay here is to showcase what it looks like in our building, what they live, what they go through and the excitement. I mean, we have to showcase it or we're gonna start losing district, losing kids and that means money, so.
And I think for the, for the first time, maybe it's noticeable for me because I've reached the age where my child is going to high school. But, but you're right, kids are not just going to the tech schools or they're not just going to the private school, they're going to other local commu-, like across the street kinda thing.
Right.
And it's like.
Why?
Why? Why?
Well, I was just gonna say though, it goes with what Wendy was saying that. The families need to know, but forget the families, the kids. Because I know my kids, starting in fourth, fifth grade, going to BBT, that's my goal, that's where I'm headed. Why are our fourth graders saying that?
Except for one of yours who said he's a charger.
Exactly, for life, charger for life. But why are they saying that in fourth and fifth grade? Like, how do we get in front of them? How do we bring them up to see the robotics lab? So that in fifth grade, they're like, hey, they are doing really cool robots up there and that's my goal, that's my end game.
You just reminded me. When I was in, maybe fourth grade, I remember having student council and somebody come down, they were part of a. Their program and they were the big kids talking about talking it up.
Yep.
And they were getting excited.
Yeah, lunch.
I remember going home and saying, hey, I, we had three high schoolers in my building.
Six foot four.
Even just in the last two years or three years, when they've done the march through all the schools when they graduate and they're capsing gowns. And the kids are like, wait a minute, I want my picture in front of the building and I wanna come parade through, that's really cool. And I wanna see the teachers come out. I know in Millville, the teachers put out their class pictures from that grade. They can see themselves. I mean, you need to market those fourth and fifth graders who are in fourth and fifth grade going, I'm going to BBT, what do I need to do to get there?
Well, but they get that from somewhere and, and to be quite honest, I have conversations with my fourth and fifth, sixth grader pretty regularly. So they get that because they're, somebody's hearing and seeing product.
Well, and I think a lot of it is older siblings too. It's kids who are like, well, that's where my brother goes and that's where my sister goes and I wanna go do that and, you know, I think marketing younger too will be helpful.
I mentioned to Jason, after we were at a conference on the Cape, I was traveling to, to one of the workshops and. They were playing radio ads for school choice, for different school districts. I was really struck by it and I was like.
Erin, you wanna tell me about the place?
I was torn, I, I was torn because.
I never got to do anything with that picture because my phone died. So Wendy and I went to breakfast.
At Betty's.
At Betty's Donuts. Which I had never been to in my entire life. Never been, I had never been there and we sat down and the girl put placemats in front of us.
I know what's coming because we were just having this conversation.
Cause you said, just go to me, you text, you took a picture and texted to me. I, we were going to send it to you.
And, and that was the discussion is during our breakfast, we need to do this, how are we?
I was like, I sat there like.
We were just having a discussion with Mr. Dudeck at four o'clock. Myself, Jack and Mr. Dudeck.
It was him and it was Jack.
And you could have, I mean, you could, this could go, we could have this conversation for the next hour and a half of how we're going to market. But you get the kids involved and you get the printing company involved. They just, they design, I mean, think of an elementary designing something and then the high school printing out those placemats for Betty's Donuts and dropping off 5,000 of them.
So that was Wendy's answer. When I sat there in disbelief, she's like, someone has to drop them off, Erin, I'm like.
Be honest, did you go and tear up all the placemats?
You know, back to Karen's point, you know, what, why aren't some of the elementary schools having a field trip to the maker space? You know, it's like, why aren't we, instead of like marching the older kids to the younger kids, bringing the younger kids and not bringing the eighth graders to the high school, bringing the sad.
Yeah, eighth grade is too late, we need them in there by sixth.
I'll remember that the, the last year when they had to go to school late or they had to march down from the elementary school. That was the highlight of my two boys, the absolute highlight was going into that high school. They were so excited that Nana tried to pick them up and they're like, I'm not going. But they were, I mean, this gets, this gets the little ones.
And now they have that nice sidewalk, make a nice walk on it this year.
We wanna get the little, you know, the, the flags that you put up on the light posts. Matt and I were discussing to line, you know, Main Street and the different, like the main kinda countries of all for like BMR, you know. Showcase that, you know, with our colors and maybe our core value on each one or something like that.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Or. I bet the town, if you were to have a conversation with the town for that, I think they, they would, we could work together with the town to do something on Main Street with those flat, with flags like that. I think it's, it's showcasing our town. Publicity, I guess.
If we had a small.
So we need a PR committee.
Yeah, if we had a small kind of committee to, to help.
Yeah, we need a PR. Yeah. People with excitement, people with ideas, creativity.
So PR, communication. Showcasing students.
But, you know, we have to, we have to take, and I know it's hard, we're all, especially come budget season, we feel like we're in meetings every single day, every single. I mean, I think there was a week, one day last spring, that I saw Jason every single day. It was like, okay, see you tomorrow. So I get that it's hard, but I think if we're gonna commit to these things, like if we commit to, you know, trying to showcase students, we can't say, okay, Jason, we want a student and like, we need to say, all right, I'm gonna reach out to the principals and see if I can get somebody from this school.
Wouldn't we be over, I think that would be overstepping our role. If we, if we're reaching out to a principal, I would worry that that's over, that's.
But I think it's in the development of the PR committee and the.
What is coming and we have, there's a purpose laid out. I think if it's a plan, it's organized and structured.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying pick up the phone. You have to be here.
Yes, you're not wrong by thinking that. But if we have it laid out in a intentional way, everybody's in the loop.
This, a small committee. Plans accordingly, public, you know, the publicity part of it and then the rollout. Wouldn't be us.
This is what we like to see, this is what we like to.
We've got the high school kids who kinda like, I'm sure there's a ton of them that love that kinda thing. They could work with us.
We have kids that are like looking for internship.
I was just gonna say, we could have an internship for.
Say this is what we need to do, give, you know.
And it would be fun to include the elementary kids or middle school kids too.
That'd be great.
Um, the only other thing, maybe a change, Jane. Maybe I'm talking too much tonight. Is the, um, we had a long conversation of the summer in math and we had it in May, at the end of May of the summer in math work.
Oh, that was, no, remember when I said, oh, I forgot my other thing.
Oh, good, I was reading mine.
No, I underlined it when I, I was like, oh, but I didn't wanna leave the other. It needs to be a coordinated effort of what the, the students get as their summer packet and it needs to be available, not. Cause I have to click on the main website to click on the school website, to click on the summer thing.
Yeah, that's all we knew anyways.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it really needs to be one, you know, not a, a handout that was copied from a book and this looks cute.
But there needs to be a reason for it.
Right.
There can't just be, here's a packet. There needs to be a reason for it, it should be presented, everybody, I mean, we talked about, you know, having unity of some sort. You know, and I think that that, that should be ready to go. Because when it was, and, and to no fault of anybody, this has been the same packets for however many years it has rolled out. But I think because we're talking about District of One, unity, talking about horizontal alignment, vertical alignment, I think that needs to, to really be presented to us. Not just, here's the packet for the school, here's, you know, and I think it needs to, there needs to be a reason for it. That, that was a.
Should be aligned across the schools. Here's what our kids are gonna be thinking about during the summer.
If we're using a common curriculum, if we're using a common, and I have to believe that Envisions has a summer math. I just have to believe that they have a summer work packet for each grade. I just believe that they probably do.
So it has, so in my, in my, my theory behind this is that it has to be meaningful. So I'm gonna be cautious on my words right now, but when you, when your parent sends in a summer reading packet and I don't need it, that's a lot for a child who just struggled with their parents on a regular basis all summer to get this reading packet done and then they don't need it. You know, it has to be meaningful. So I really wanna make sure that it, meaningful work, if it's a summer reading book, if it's.
In terms of meaningful, you also mean that it is truly in fact required, that the teacher's gonna do something.
That it's required, that something's gonna get done with it, whether they get a little bookmark, something's gonna get done with it, yes. And that it's, it's, it's meaning, I just think it needs to be meaningful. I don't know if the packets are meaningful, but if you had a book and they're talking about empathy, now wait a minute, you just, you just gave us two words.
Understanding.
And. So if it's understanding, okay, patience and understanding, so. The theme of the district is patience and understanding, where are we going with this for, for the summer, you know, like.
But I, but I do think there is value and I know that people will argue with me, but I do think there is value in. In giving work for the sake of practice.
Yes.
So in other words, you know, reading, I get you, you know, come in and then there should be a class discussion about it, even to the young kids, did you read this book? Tell me about your book. Okay, but like a math perspective, you just gotta weekly do some math. And here's your IXL or here's your whatever program we have or, you know, our, our reading program, we saw that some people really use those. You know, available readings and some people didn't, but, you know, the, the math, there is value in practice. You don't, you don't learn a guitar by going to a lesson for six months and then you never play it over the summer, you don't. So some things just have to be practiced, but it should be coordinated effort. So I'm practicing what I have learned with the intention of remembering it, so when I start again, a, a teacher looks at that and says, well, you know, you're still really struggling with this or. But if they don't look at it, if they never even collect it.
Or just, you know, it needs to be meaning, you have a second grader who struggles, it's a struggle in the summertime when they, they're arguing with you that. I don't have a second grader, but it's summer, for them it's summer, there should be no work, it's summer. So you, you think about those home components, you know, so when they do bring it in, you want it to be.
I under, I understand your point clearly too. I mean, it needs to be meaningful and engaging. You know, a worksheet doesn't inspire a kid to wanna do the math, you know? Maybe getting them out into the community or having them do some activities that are incorporating the math facts and the, you know, the math practice into it. And gets them outside too during the summer, that'll be more effective.
Just more of a, of a, a look at that earlier so that we can, you know, again, be able to process, but process before.
And again, not our, not our thing. But, but our thing in terms of presenting to the parents, an image and a package and a, you know, we know what we're doing.
Yes.
And, and everything looks polished and professional and not just, there you go. Copy this worksheet.
Even the high school level, I feel like, you know, I'm sure the teachers put a lot of thought into the theme, but I'm not sure that all of the kids understand that day that they spend on that theme. Yeah, it's, I think this last year was better than the first year, so hopefully this year will be better too, but I know, I've heard some of the kids kinda like eh. About that day, so they're like, why'd I have to read the book? Like, we don't actually talk about the book, we talk about the theme. I'm sure that kids are different, but that was my one takeaway on that.
Yeah.
All right, anything else that's in here?
Is the, is the mid-year evaluations still okay in February before vacation? Or if we're gonna move, make an adjustment, would that need to be an adjustment too? More like a, a march?
So I think with that piece, we could probably leave it because we would have the, that's where we need the star data. Yeah, so I think we'll be okay with that being around that timeline. I think it's more the end of the year that we have to move around.
Will you be giving us? Any updates on the. The career pathway through the year?
Yeah, actually I have, I have a.
Should we have a timeline in place for that or?
Yeah, so I do have, that's actually one of the items on the, the next item for that matter on the, our agenda type. So absolutely, we'll be, I'll be giving regular updates on that because that's going to expand. We've actually already committed to having advanced manufacturing too.
That's a great selling point too.
And we had a meeting this evening with the parents and students that are participating at the high school.
And how many do we have again?
We have six, which is more than any other district actually that's in this little group, which is, which is really awesome. And we have our orienta, so, so we have backing up a step tomorrow. Some of the Blackstone Valley superintendents are actually gonna be attending a conversation with Lieutenant Governor, Lieutenant Governor Karen Polito about this work. Yeah, and so it's an event at the Chamber of Commerce, the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce. So all be in attendance, as will others, and she's specifically discussing the. Kind of the next generation with manufacturing and a partnership between us and advanced manufacturing. And so it's, you know, we're gonna, she'll be highlighting, not specifically this piece of the work, but the overall structure that we're trying to plug into. And so we're really excited about that. But on September 10th, which is a week from Tuesday, we have our parent orientation at the Ed Hub. So the superintendents that are involved, which is Sutton, obviously BMR, Hope Dale and Bellingham. And Uxbridge is, we're actually using their teacher, I just rang, I met with him last week, all the superintendents and the teacher, that's really awesome. To go through everything, to be frank, for the course. So we have an orientation at 6:00 PM on the 10th at the Ed Hub. We're gonna do a little tour, we're gonna see all the equipment, which is just like kinda mind blowing, the stuff the kids will be using. And we're gonna address the families and then the teacher's gonna throw all of us out, so they can actually start the class. And it will run every Tuesday night from six to eight for the semester. And then they're gonna segue right into advanced manufacturing two. And we, maybe we'll be able to run another advanced manufacturing one course, we'll have to wait and see, but. So, yeah, so there'll be updates on that.
So is the person, you gotta, you said you grant. Is, is there going to be a person, a coordinator?
Yes, yes, and that is really helpful. For all of us, so, yep, we actually wrote a job description, putting in a job description, which as a matter of fact, you all have seen the goals of that work. We remember we did the PowerPoint in the spring to outline the goals, so that will be the goal, those will be the goals for the, for that individual.
So will that person then hope, cause my, I guess my, my hope, and I talked to Jason about this a little bit, is that's the piece that. Kind of bringing together and offering our students another opportunity, but can we do something here? Like what can we bring? And so what happened with the nurse, the CNA or whatever?
So this got, so that got really interesting. And what we decided to do was actually plug into a, I may not be saying the right term, elder care? Kind of group, assisted living, I think is the right terminology. We actually are partnering with an assisted living group out of Quincy and their CEO, because that individual ran the pilot. That, the home health aide pilot for his organization. And so I know it sounds like it's far away and I get it, it is, but we wanted to work with somebody that actually has done this before. So he, Mike and I have been in conversation over the summer and are setting up, it's gonna be in the fall, so it's behind the timeline we wanted, but that's okay. To reengage three or four of our graduates in that, in that program. So yes, it is still very much in the radar. We just, we took a little bit of a turn. Instead of trying it new on our end and then new with an assisted living group that had never done it, we said, let's scratch that, let's go with somebody that did it.
But will that's, you're kind of connecting the two, will that fall under the career pathways? Or is that something we're doing in a separate?
That's something we're doing separately for our students, but it doesn't mean, cause I did have discussions with Hope Dale and Bellingham and.
Jump on.
Yep, about that as well. So the idea of this coordinator will be to pull together what we are referring to as a portfolio of options, like career development options within the Blackstone Valley school districts. What we are ultimately trying to do is stop the kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul and I'm leaving you to go to advanced manufacturing and you're leaving him to go to computer coding. We wanna just open it up, so kids don't have to leave. You can be a BMR student and take a biomed program at Hope Dale. Like, I mean, that's ultimately where we're trying to get this. But we're starting with this one, kind of this one piece to get that off the ground, yep. And then, you know, we even discussed long range, you know, having a high school showcase in the Blackstone Valley and we're all together in one place. We're not stealing people from other people, like other schools, but we're trying to show. We're not stealing people from other people, like other schools, but we're trying to showcase what we have and get kids to stay in our schools, but still take, you know-
But know what the opportunities are.
So they don't, they know they don't have to, you don't have to leave our district to do advanced manufacturing, we have an avenue for that. You don't have to leave to do biomedical, like you can do it here, you know, and so, yes.
You can be here, be a student here.
And take a course somewhere else.
Right. Or courses, or program.
Yep. So that's ultimately where we're trying to go with that.
So I'm gonna segue back for just a minute to the previous discussion. So I, so policy, we know, we have to get back on the stick with, because we had, I think, one meeting and then kind of died. Budget is, we committed last year that it was essentially all of us, I have PR, I have facilities, and I have RAC. Is there something that we're missing that we, as a committee, wanna focus?
What was the last name?
Sarah's Rack.
Oh.
Sorry.
It's okay.
What are we doing with curriculum and instruction? Didn't we have a subcommittee?
That was, we did, but we didn't, we didn't do anything.
Yeah, we didn't.
We didn't do anything.
As a committee.
As a committee. Yay!
Now you're gonna, we're both leaving.
We did not, we, we did not take that on, the administration took that.
In terms of agenda items, we're going to get an update on the science curriculum.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So that's how we got off track on the career pathways. I would like, be, especially because it's the first year, you know, consistent updates on that, if you're asking us what we want on the agenda, I was just asking for that to be.
I'm kind of asking both, I'm asking, what do we want to focus energy on that we get involved in? Like, we have our subcommittee, you know, we have a couple people who are gonna make that there, like Wendy's gonna make evaluations her thing, and keep us on top of it, or whatever, whether she knew it or not yet, but Sarah's gonna keep the regional agreement amendment committee her thing, and keep us updated on that. And, and, you know, pull other people in as necessary, cause I think we need, it can't be one people show, but what are those other things that, that we wanna commit to, to making, to making sure happen in this district?
But I also think we-
And then, what do we wanna make sure we're, we have updated? And so, yes, I agree with you, the whole career pathway needs to be consistent, you know, just like we have Matt's report, where we have the, you know, staff that are leaving and the budget, and the, you know, we kinda have ongoing, here's what's happening with this.
Because I mean, the career pathways would fall under curriculum and instruction.
You make it sound not so exciting.
Well, it's not, it's hard.
But I, I think, and I, I don't know, we, I think many of us have been on this for a number of years, we fall into this pattern of creating a bunch of subcommittees and doing nothing with it.
Doing nothing, right.
So I think, although those things are great, I don't know if I would wanna add anything, I can't commit to more than that one thing, and, you know, I, I just, that pattern just sounds like, and then you get nerve-wracking when you have to come and say something, but we haven't done anything, it's just kinda like, you know, a sub, we just don't wanna fall into that pattern of creating subcommittees that-
Well, I agree, that's why I'm saying, what is it we really, you know, because we created some and we did nothing. You know, they were important focuses and the administration did something, but we didn't really take on that work.
But as far as school committee goes, it's budget, policy, superintendent, so those are on there, and, and anything else is an extension of our limitations, and so we're here when we need policy, we're here when we need budget, but creating something else as a project? I mean, we're working on regional agreement because it needs, it needs-
It's under our jurisdiction part of policy, right?
So you're saying we don't need a small PR group?
Does it need to be us?
I don't think, I think that's just a conversation-
It should be somebody of us, it should be one of us.
I, I, I-
I mean, it should be. No, I know, I know.
But I, I think-
It's like our leadership training, was keeping the main thing, the main thing.
Right, so the more, the more things you add, the less time you give.
The less the main thing becomes the main.
Well, I think there's two, there's, we're actually running parallel conversations, I think, one is, like, what are the big-ticket items we need on the agenda?
On here, right.
Those we have, those we have.
Teaching and learning updates, and yeah. And then what are kind of the, well, you know the main focus of the committee is policy, budget, superintendent, but, right, what are, what are some of the, kind of the other pieces of work that, is what I'm hearing Jane say, which the committee could be helpful in kind of moving?
Correct.
So things like some of the work around-
Communication.
Well, that's budget.
Regional agreement.
That's all, that's budget, because we wanna keep those, we wanna keep those students here, so that's what drove the conversation of budget, I mean, of, getting lost now. That's what drove the conversation of PR, is we want, we're trying to keep the students in, which would make our budget meetings a little easier, right?
Yeah. And I think from that perspective, like, so this information was, it was super helpful in terms of framing out the structure of our agenda.
Yep, yep.
Cause as we know, we're gonna have teaching and learn, regular teaching and learning update, that could include, you know, the career development work, it could include a lot of different pieces, the, you know, curriculum updates in terms of the literacy work we're gonna be doing, the science implementation, you know, kind of stuff. We know we wanna hear from kids routinely, from, you know, all ends, from music, from athletics, you know, but it's, I'd love to hear what the kids think about the science units, you know, like actually have them come, if they can, and, you know, talk a little bit about that, how they're using the maker space, right? So I think, I think what I'm hearing is we need to create a space in those sessions for those topics.
So with that being said, and we all said it when we got here, is we haven't had a workshop in, in a long time, I feel like most of our workshops became working meetings. So do we need to go back to more frequent meetings, especially during budget season, where we can have those groups in here, and, or do we still call them workshops? Cause it was last year this time that we made a change.
Some of those meetings are long enough without-
Well, and I think our meetings have gotten a little longer than expected, because we're only having it, running it as one meeting. I mean, maybe it's still a workshop, but it's, that's when we are bringing the groups in, or, you know, we have a-
You know what we could think of, too, is looking at the calendar, and maybe we keep like a workshop a quarter to check in on like, let's, how are we doing? Like, like here's kinda how we wanted to structure things, this is how we wanted to set things up, and maybe we create the time within the calendar for this kinda dialogue as we're going through the year? Doesn't have to be every month, but maybe once a quarter, once a trimester, kinda thing.
And I think it made our other meetings a little more lengthy than what we've been used to, but since you've been here, we've been keeping you for two-plus hours.
As we're doing again.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I think we could do, you know, our two meetings a month become regular meetings, and then, you know, the March meeting, or the, is the, you know, budget is, is actually a workshop, and we, you know, plan for that, and maybe the June is whatever it is, and, you know, and maybe fourth, fourth of the year, we do that. I mean, cause we need to do, this is good, this is important, yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to take a, I can, we can take a stab at kind of adjusting that, and see if you come up with like an option? Okay.
And the goal is to shorten each one, right?
Well, you just added stuff, Erin.
No. To the agenda, but not-
When you look at our meeting, shorten anything.
This doesn't look bad, it's the, what we sat through seemed a lot more than, you know, it's like-
I think it was chunked into one meeting a month.
It was pretty impressive that everybody did, I think, I mean, there, we did like some heavy stuff, reorganizing four departments is, like, that was, there was a lot of conversation and questions and-
But this also doesn't include any of the budget workshops, which there were a number of them.
Right, that's what we had.
That's where we added a lot of times.
Well, I feel like we used these for that, didn't we?
We did a couple.
Some, a couple, but we added extra.
A couple, we added more.
We added extra, and, and don't forget, we are still, I, I assume, still committed to the town and gown relationship of the joint meeting?
When is that?
October 2nd. But I haven't sent anything out yet, but that's one of the-
I think it was a, just a phrase.
October 2nd. What?
The first thing you said, was it town and gown?
Yes.
I said it was like a phrase I've never-
I've never heard that town.
When is the town and gown?
What's a town and gown?
So what do, what do graduates wear?
Gowns.
Gowns. So col, so colleges or schools are considered gown, and you have town and gown relationship?
Might be a Midwest thing, I don't know. I've never heard that term.
Heard that term, town and gown?
No.
I'm being an Illinois thing.
Maybe, maybe a California thing, I've heard it for you. Maybe it's a college thing, I mean, it makes probably more sense than a college thing.
College thing, probably higher ed, yeah.
Yeah, trust me.
So October 2nd is-
Google it. The relationship between the schools and the town.
Second page of the agenda, October 2nd.
October 2nd.
And that's at 7:00.
It's down here, yeah.
Seven PM.
Six.
Six PM. Well, I don't care, I mean, we can do it at 7:00.
No, no, it's 6:00, it's fine.
And I'll be sending, I'll send a, a letter to everybody, I figured I have all the time. Do it now, they'll forget about it. All right, so I think we can, we can-
Be good from that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's go on to vacancy.
Very quick, vacant, these are all, just, this is what we have left, we, that we're looking to fill a .5 ELL teacher, that's cause we had an end-of-the-year resignation. The special ed teacher for grade one, we had to repost, but we have a plan, we have the K teacher that is working with kindergarten and first grade. The special ed coach, we already talked about. Reading specialist, we just had a retirement as of Sunday, that was unexpected, so-
Where?
At the complex. And we added the, the primary level, primary grade level, and we added a .5, I think you remember, I'd sent an email to everybody about that, to add at the middle school, so now we're hiring for a full-time, like a 1.0. Music teacher, we went back out, we had a finalist, was not the right fit, so we went back out. High school, same, went back out for that, and we have one more ABA pair.
So high school math teacher, that position is not filled?
Not yet, not yet.
Are there classes for that?
Not yet, nope. No, there's no sub in there. We have, we intentionally left that unscheduled until we brought the person in.
Okay.
Cause that's, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Okay. Do we have an update on that stats class?
Yes, it is running. We are running the AP stats, actually, I was, I visited that classroom yesterday to check in.
Small.
Very small, you know, it's about half the number of students, and Mike did, in fact, go into each profile and looked deeply at the performance of each one of those students, and had a one-on-one conversation with each student, and then with the teacher, and already set up the coaching.
And a plan, okay, and a plan?
Yep.
Good. I just was worried that they were gonna be left last, at the last meeting, so I wanted to just circle back.
Absolutely, yep.
So just a question about that high school math teacher, that's the one plus that we gave him, and he was, there's a new history teacher.
That was Mr. Curran, that is now our coach, so that's just filling his position.
That worked well, okay. I thought there was an additional, and I was confused, because I knew you told me math, so.
And that math course will be some intervention work, but will also be enrichment, entrepreneurship, you know, more the business side of those.
So this, this math, when was this math coach, when the math teacher posted?
We posted that.
Late?
It was later in the summer, it was a mid, maybe the second, first, end of the first week of August, and we have, we're working with three finalists, the high school wanted to move one forward, and it didn't, it wasn't, didn't work, so.
So it's reposted?
Yeah, it was reposted, yep. It was reposted, I mean, right away after that, yep. Yep. So this is what, is what we're still filling. And then just quickly, bugs, bubblers, and charter schools, we just wanna quickly touch on that. I know this is kind of a silly name, but, do you wanna talk about the bug?
Sure.
That's before our, our vote?
Yeah, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Bugs, bubblers, and who?
Bugs and bubblers first.
Bugs and bubblers, certainly. I think I had another package of papers here, no, I'm wondering where it went. Goodness. So we were talking about notifying the elementary schools, I'll pass that around, this is our bugs.
The mosquito conversation.
Yeah, it's the mosquito conversation. So we've had some concerns about whether or not students should be outside, is there any impact of the spraying that's taking place in the evening? We have been assured that it is safe for the kids to be outside on the property during the day. They're saying that so long as it's before sunset, they're, the risk is significantly decreased. Our elementary schools are going to continue to have their outdoor recess, but we would like to communicate with our families and recommend that people send some bug repellent.
Okay, so I have an issue with that, and, and maybe it's just me, but I'm envisioning kids on a bus with, shh, I just, I'm envisioning sending an ele, sending a kindergartner with bug spray.
And then who puts on the bug spray? Cause I know there's a very fine line on that, that spraying.
Yes, we conferred specifically with the Board of Health and with Tim, he's-
Mosquito control.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Mosquito control.
Mosquito control.
And so we're going on there, we're going on his, specifically his recommendation, that Matt was reviewing, which is, you know, certainly could offer families the opportunity to send it in if they want to use that, that's fine, but-
As long as their child sprays.
Yeah, we have parents that are, you know, like they're counting the bug bites and reaching us about, you know, my kid shouldn't be outside, and so we understand it's a concern.
Fear.
Yeah, and we get that, and so, I know, and so, you know, I think the recess part's easy enough, if there's a parent that's uncomfortable.
Right, and we also included that, that-
Yeah, I think that, I think that's fine, if you don't want your child to be out, notify us, I think that part's great.
We'll make alternate arrangements.
Let your kid bring the bug spray, that's bugging me, I guess.
I don't know. I don't see how that could-
Did this already go out?
No, no, no.
So could we actually ask, like, parents to donate it to classrooms, and then it would be?
But then it's the responsibility of who to spray it, because if you spray, I mean, it's-
Right, that was also a concern, that was also a concern of, Jason and I had spoken about, like, purchasing bug spray and letting, but there's certain chemicals, right, there's certain chemicals, and I don't, we don't know who, which student is gonna react which way.
But I, you know, can't we just say, you know, spray your kid before they, before they get on the bus?
Sure, we can totally change that, spray-
And if you want, if you, you're more than welcome to come in and spray your child before they go to recess. I, I don't think the teachers would go for bringing in the bug spray and, and being responsible for spraying.
Kids.
I know, I wouldn't, because I wouldn't-
I wasn't asking, we weren't suggesting that the teachers apply the spray, we're just saying that if kids wanted to bring, parents wanted to send their kids, they have a lot of kids stuff, too, they have like sticks, and they have some other non-aerosol.
This is an issue that, we have to get ahead of this, cause I'm telling you right now, with the stuff that's already bubbling up, like it's gonna, this will become-
No, I, I, I get that, I guess I'm just saying, you know, it is safe for our students to be outside on our elementary schools, we'll continue to have outdoor recess, recess during the school day, as such, we're encouraging families to use bug spray on their child before they leave for school in the morning.
But how long is it good?
Bug bans?
There are other alternatives.
Well, you could just say, the following things are allowed.
Tell them to keep them in for recess.
Bug bans.
No aerosol.
But what are you going to do if 50 kids are going to stay in for recess now? I mean, I'm not saying that's going to happen, but then you have a teacher who stays in and a teacher who goes, would you move it all at like...
We can take care of that.
Because you know you're going to have the opposite side. If enough kids end up staying in, then you call indoor recess, you're going to have the parents calling who are like, that's ridiculous. My kid should be outside. Can't please everyone.
I don't want, I don't want the conversation to get...
I just think there's another way to say it other than send your kid with bug spray.
That's fine. We, we're happy to address it.
Spray him in the morning.
We are trying to get ahead of this issue because it's already starting to pop up.
How often are we getting sprays?
So my, that was my question. Could you clarify, are, were the schools sprayed separately or are we depending on this town spraying that may or may not?
The town is spraying.
But by truck, right?
But overhead?
Right. The aerial spraying.
Is it the aerial or are they also doing it with a truck?
The information that was sent emailed with the...
I thought I saw trucks in a message on my phone.
The mosquito control guy, are they, because they spray at Millville.
By request. Not, only if you sign up for it.
No, twice a year as a town.
Oh, yes.
Twice a year as a town, but you can opt out that they don't come to your house. So twice a year as a town, they spray, this red truck goes around.
Or you, and you can sign out.
This is the aerial, right? Yes. And you can call and say, come do my thing. They come look at your house and they come, they say, we'll be here at 8:00.
So the, so the black, so I can, so the Blackstone is, Blackstone side of it is using the Central Mask Mosquito Control Project people. They're using them. Because we had to have a lot of our consent sign up.
So are Millville.
Okay.
So they're coming to our building?
We use the same, we use the same, it's the Central Mask Mosquito Control Program. And we signed consents for all of the Blackstone buildings and Millville.
And that's what was emailed to every parent.
That's what went out to every parent.
So that probably already happened.
That is not the air spraying.
That's not the air.
I think only Millville was getting the air. I think parts of Blackstone weren't getting the air either.
Yes, it was not all.
I think that was a...
Our schools, we signed up our schools with the...
Central Mask Mosquitoes.
All right. So that'll be the truck spraying. Do you know how often? Are they doing it once a week or is it...
We were already done. It was...
So it's one time?
It was done last Monday.
Okay. So maybe we should write, it was sprayed. They were sprayed.
Yes, it was already taken care of. We just, I, we don't want to create a thing. We just want to make sure that like...
Because the, the question is, are kids allowed to bring bug spray for our policies?
I'd say no.
Why?
Who's going to spray them?
What if they're capable of spraying themselves?
Because some of the bug sprays are poisonous. And so if you send your kid with DEET.
I'm talking in terms of our current policy.
Policy.
Will they be punished if they bring in bug spray?
Well, this, if we send this one, they won't be.
Regardless, I think Sarah is asking without this letter, if I, if my kid brought in bug spray, what would happen?
My guess is the teacher would probably take it and give it to the nurse and let the principal know. If I had to just quickly...
Like, does it fall under the cough drop rule? Does it fall under the sunblock rule?
Is there a sunblock rule?
Oh, get me go.
Is there a sunblock?
I don't know. That's what I'm saying. That's what Sarah is asking.
You want them sprayed, spray your child before they come to school. And that's it.
Because most of them have like an eight hour, if you look at the pa, I think the...
I just think we have to send something.
I agree. And I, I think the, you know, they go outside if you don't want them altered for the race.
From the parents to the principals, that my kid came home with, you know, with seven bug bites, like that, that's, I mean...
Put them in a bubble.
I don't, I don't know what to say to that there.
Right.
But it, but all, it always says after, at night, it, I mean, we're, we're, we're following what's, what they're suggesting.
Massachusetts Department of Health.
We're following, so, so, we're following the guidelines of the, you know, but if you prefer...
It's not even that, that they're questioning, they're questioning, my, you, you sent my child to recess and he came in with seven bug bites.
That's because there's bugs.
What are you going to do about that? I mean, that, that, listen, like, we're at that level. I'm telling you, like, that we're at that level.
It's only the second day.
We're working with the principals on how to address the bug bite.
So I'm saying, spray before.
Spray before.
Get a bug band.
I was going to say that.
They have those. They do work. I live by...
A good spray.
I'll change the wording on that.
Some suggestions that are welcome at our school are...
But we can't do anything about mosquitoes. Here's what you can do. We've done everything we can, but...
So spray ahead or you can request indoor...
Here are some, yeah, well, I just think you could say, here are some suggestions that would help ease the, the bug bites. Spray your child ahead of time, send them in with bug band.
No, it's fine. We've got a...
You have an idea.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
So let's go to bubblers, if that's okay.
Bubblers.
Bubblers is a separate communication.
Bubblers is separate, specifically for Millville.
This is specific to Millville. So our point on this...
Well, here's the problem, right?
Do you think it's...
Why don't you lay out the...
Sorry, interrupt.
Well, the problem, the problem is that the water is getting monitored. However, the water gets monitored and we get the results a month or so after. And then they'll say, oh, your levels are extremely high. You shouldn't drink the water. I will say, I will say that we have, we have checked multiple times and we have been told that the water is drinkable. And their concerns are excessive and over long-term exposure to halocetic acids in the water. It could cause problems. That being said, as soon as you start having those conversations and then you ask someone, would you want your child to drink the water? The answer becomes no.
Right.
So we don't want any child drinking the water until it's fixed. So we want the bubblers off and everybody will, will provide water.
And I just, I mean, I just, I think the mindset of Millville parents, and you guys can tell me if I'm wrong, my kid never drank out of that water.
But they're drinking it. I was there yesterday and they take the kids to class by class.
But do teachers bring them to the bubbler?
Yes, yes.
There was an after school club last year? Our parents have never trusted it.
No, but there was a club last year that they walked the kindergarteners to the bubblers and let them all go. And I was like...
Jason walked in and saw that.
And I almost pulled a little girl off the bubbler myself.
New well, new...
And I know that it's clean and they can and everything's saying, it's okay.
That's an issue that we've, that's for towns.
Yep. We'll provide, we'll provide the water coolers.
They own the belt, they own the belt.
Their solution has been to spend millions of dollars in treating this water for 12 plus years because I calculated my time yesterday.
I shouldn't say that's the town, I'm not, I don't mean to say that's the town's issue. We have had conversations, Peter and I have had conversations and communication about what the options are. It's ongoing. It's an ongoing conversation. The assumptions that we're running on are the department, the DEP considers the water theirs. It's a public property. They own it. And therefore the public water source is theirs. The long-term solution, which again, I can't speak to specifics of what decisions the town will make, the long-term solution is to hook up to a neighboring town's water supply.
Who's got one?
Well, Uxbridge.
Everyone's got, everyone's got one.
Uxbridge, it was discussed many years ago.
Yep. Yeah. The, the, the one that makes, I believe if I were to speak out of turn, I think the one that is the closest and most accessible would be Blacks, would be Blackstones. But there's political arrangements and agreements that need to be made.
15 years ago, which is a long time. And my father was the fire chief. The hydrant systems were being connected from the Uxbridge side. And there was talk about going through the woods of Killenley Woods, coming right up Kempton Road and, and going into the back of the school.
Isn't there water not good to drink? Aren't they? I thought there's an area.
Kempton.
It is Kempton, right?
Was, was in the not drinkable at one point recently.
The DEP, the DEP and the town and they're working on this so long.
So I'm going to move us on. This letter is, is fine. I think that's what we need to do. We need to close those bubblers permanently and bring water.
So you're turning them off?
We don't want the kids...
We're turning them off.
Turning them off.
I don't want the kids...
Closing them up and turning them off.
Bring water. If you can't bring water, there'll be a whole thing in the capitol.
We'll get additional water for them to drink.
Yeah, Matt's already taken care of that.
A full bottle of water that is not made of glass. So the water cannot be made of glass.
It's like, kind of like...
I got you.
Yeah.
Anybody with less than a full bottle would not be allowed in.
But I'm reading it. Glass water.
All right. So we're okay with that. In the charter school...
Even worse for you than the stuff with halocetic acids.
Just very quickly, there is a new application that has gone in. They, a, a group has submitted a prospectus. I sent it to everybody over the summer, but I know summertime, so I wanted to bring it back to the surface. It is a group in, from Milford that is putting a charter proposal in for a K to eight school, 270 children from across Medway, Milford, Blackstone, Millville, Mendon Upton, Uxbridge, Hope Dale and Bellingham. Seven communities, all the superintendents met today. I have read the proposal very thoroughly and I will tell you there is nothing in that proposal that your average, you know, your typical public school is not already doing. There's a lot of words and there's not a lot of substance. I went through it with a fine tooth comb, particularly the section on teaching and learning. A lot of buzz terms and then you see everyday mail. You know, which is districts are moving away from that. So, you know, they have not been invited yet by the commissioner to submit a final proposal. That will not happen until sometime in September. If they do, they will be, the final proposals will be due on October 16th. We are trying to get, this seven superintendents are, we are trying to get a conversation with the commissioner. It is completely unnecessary for another charter school in our communities. And we have our talking points, which are quite frankly, not really even tethered to budget, but are tethered to, if the notion of a charter is to be innovative, show me the innovation in this plan. Because there is nothing innovative about what's written in there. The other part is, the charters are, they, they are resegregating our schools. I looked at all the data today from the seven communities that are being impacted by this. As far as special ed, as far as ethnicity, as far as free reduced lunch and high poverty schools, of which we are, it, it's actually quite interesting that the, the charter schools in our area are absolutely segregating our, our school systems in terms of the kids that are leaving and getting accepted. So I'm not against charter schools. I, I haven't ever, never come out to say, you know, staunchly against it, but I'm against charter schools. It offers something different. This offers nothing different than what we're doing. So I think you can expect a very strong vocal from, yep, from our group. And, and if they are asked to submit a final proposal, we are going to be asking our school committees clearly to get behind us in this for those that feel that they can and want to. Because we need to speak very strongly against this. But more to come on that. But I wanted to just mention, so you all know that we are right on this issue and are already meaning to address it. So that's that. I don't know if, I didn't know if anyone had a chance to read through it or not, or hadn't.
All right. So we need to take a vote. Entertain a motion. Do you, do you vote number one?
Somebody to read it?
Yes, please. You move.
I move. The Blackstone Millville Regional District School Committee hereby authorizes Dr. Jason DeFalco Superintendent and/or Matthew Aronworth Assistant Superintendent to sign the project funding agreement for the Millville Accelerated Repair Project, project ID number 201806220010.